Does it ever happen that someone will be involved in a random shooting? Because the gang that they're involved in or what have you tells them, "This is what you need to do to prove yourself," or "to become a gang member," what have you. Does that ever happen?
Yes, it happens. It happens far too often. I mean, let's face it, we live in a culture that hasn't clearly been paid attention to. I mean, young people grow up and are coached to grow up to be gang members, to be killers. Actually, it's an honor in many of the challenged communities that we serve, this population that we serve, it's an honor, it's a code of honor for a young person to grow up to be a killer, to grow up to engage in what we call gang-related motivated violence by way of committing homicide. As we speak, Mr. Chairman, there's a very good chance that young people throughout those challenged communities that we serve are talking about the possibilities of killing someone, of actually committing a homicide, as we speak.
And not only on other gang members, not that it's acceptable at all for anybody to be killing anybody in this city, but my point is, not just to other gang members, they may be contemplating doing that and randomly shooting somebody else. I have a friend who happens to be, had a young man who, he was in the Big Brother program, and his little brother Dexter was a victim of such an exact occurrence, and it happened in Jan Perry's district. And what a small world. I get a call from this guy saying, "Are you going to come to the press conference in Jan Perry's district about this kid Dexter?" And he used to tell me about him. He says, "My little brother Dexter's dead. Got shot five times in the back of the head on a Sunday morning." At about noon, because he was going to the store, walking to the store just a block or two from his home. Lost his life. A car pulled up behind him, a few doors down, a kid ran out of the car with a gun, ran up to the back of his head and shot him five times. How do we know that? Because they caught him. And he spilled his guts, he told them exactly why he did it, it was a random shooting, he said he was part of a gang and that was what he was supposed to do, and they were driving around for two hours before they found somebody on a Sunday afternoon and killed him, didn't know him. I'm tired of it. I really, really am tired of working on this. But I'm not going to quit. Dexter needs us to stop this. You know, people have accused me of being emotional. I pray to God, I pray to God, that we carry this kind of emotion in every single thing that we do as public servants, not just as electeds, but as bureaucrats, people on the front line. And one of the things that I want to remind every single department that has come through my committee, yes, we have a lot of work to do, yes, I may be disappointed in the work that we've done in the past, but I have constantly said, in my committee, I am not here to beat people up, I am here to remember, remind people why we are here, the work that needs to be done, all the work that we haven't got to do, that we still have to do, and my job is to try to be constructive and make sure that we do it, and that we do it better, and that we not hide behind our fears, that we not be afraid to lose our job, that we make sure that we are there and we could be proud of the work that we do, and that you are supported in what you do. Today, the controller of the City of Los Angeles, her, somebody who did a report that she's going to come out tomorrow with, is saying something, in my opinion, premature. They are saying that all future gang work needs to be moved into the mayor's office. Maybe, 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 maybe. Let's prove where it should be, let's prove how we should do it right, let's prove how we can do it better, let's prove where it belongs. That, to me, ladies and gentlemen, is politics. And politics has driven intervention and prevention funding in this city for close to 30 years. And our streets are not safe enough for our children. So I'm saying publicly to every single person who cares about this issue, if you want to add and provide leadership on this issue, I welcome it. I'm tired. I'm tired. If somebody wants to do it better than what we've been trying to do for the last two years, I'm all ears, Mr. President, I'm all ears, Mr. Garcetti. I don't want to have to have a gang committee, but we have to have it. I don't want to have to chair that committee, but we have to do it. Again, it's a shame that we do not protect our children in this city the way we should and the way we can. It's time that politics not dictate the policy, and I am not going to allow that to happen on this issue, intervention, prevention, suppression, reentry, anything that comes through that committee, anything that is under the purview of that committee will not be a political matter, it will be a policy matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. And with that, would you please open the roll, Madam Clerk? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Also, on Wednesday, February 13th, item number 45 was a consideration of a proposed ordinance, a density bonus program, as required by state law. Now, this ordinance would have an impact on affordable housing in Los Angeles. There was lengthy public comment, both for and against the proposal. We begin with District 8 Councilmember Bernard Parks, who wants clarification on just what will be used as guidelines for development throughout the city, and gets an explanation of development choices that are said to be on or off menu.
On areas such as Crenshaw specific plan, it has a four-story maximum, and we need to clarify to the public that this law preempts the specific plan as it relates to density. So that there was misinformation, and people didn't understand whether it was the specific plan, the community plan, or this legislation is basically in authority on density and height.
Helen Vivas planning? That is correct. The ordinance will preempt any zoning, you know, the latest applicable zoning, including a queue condition or a specific plan and limitations. That is correct.
Okay, then let me ask also, as far as the menu, on and off menu, particularly on height, is that driven by the state law, or is that driven by the policy within the city?
This is our on policy.
That's the policy as far as what's on menu, what's not on menu?
Correct.
Okay. Now, could we be in a situation if we went on menu or took something off that's currently recommended for on menu, such as height, and move it to off menu, does that conflict with the law at all?
City Attorney here, Ken Fong. No, Councilman, it does not. Developers can ask for anything off menu that they want to. So what the menu is, it's just a select list of concessions that are more readily available, but anything...
I understand that. What's the question specifically asked of me was, if you are on menu, it appears that it's almost by right, you come in and you ask for them. If you are off menu, it goes through some type of hearing. And so particularly with height, if it's not on menu and you have to go through a hearing, is what my constituents are asking about, because if you go over four stories on Crenshaw, if it's on menu, you can go to five without a hearing. It's by right. So I'm asking, is that in dealing with that on or off menu, being that that's a policy decision, does that conflict with the law at all as to what density is being given to a developer?
No, it does not. The state law does not set forth the procedures to implement the state law, and so that's what this ordinance is, it's setting forth the procedures. So it doesn't require that we have a hearing, but in most instances...
If it's on menu, it doesn't require?
Yes.
Okay, if it's off menu, it does?
Yes.
Contending that this plan does not provide enough affordable housing, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl says he supports the amendments to the motion, but doesn't believe the overall measure gives us what's needed.
My problem is, my district is location, 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 and all a developer wants to do is come in and build more because there's a bigger profit they can make. It's a big problem for me. If a developer were to say, "Rosendahl, I'll go 100% affordable," even if they would say 50% affordable, "I will do whatever I can do with my community and with zoning and variances to make it happen." But to me, in my district, it's just another assault on the folks and doesn't give me enough affordable housing. The problem I have is my colleague to my right, Ed Reyes, who's desperately in need of affordable housing and all kinds of housing. If the developers were to go to those districts and really work on it, rather than just coming to the Ocean District all the time to make their buck, kick out my people through an Ellis Act strategy like they did at Lincoln Place, and continue to make high-end condos and nice margins of profit, my district has had enough of that kind of development. That's why I'm working with the LAUSD right now, with the hope that we can build with the LAUSD affordable housing on their property for teachers and firefighters. So if we're able to do something that is more substantial for affordable housing, it gets my full and enthusiastic support. At this point, even though I'm an affordable housing advocate, I can't vote for it. People will say, "Well, Rosendahl, you voted for it last week." Well, it was my ignorance of the law. I can go for amending and putting amendments in, but it means I can still also vote against it, and whatever is forced through the process would at least have those amendments. So I need more before I'm able to go with it, and at this point, I'm for these amendments that make it better, but it doesn't give me what I feel I need. Now, can you respond to that? Am I wrong in what I'm saying about what it really does or doesn't do? Especially when I look at this Louis Street project in my district, those neighbors came banging on my door, it took away parking by this place going up, it put shadow and destroys the character and scale of the neighborhood. What is your general feeling about 1818 in that context?
Deputy City Attorney Ken Fong here. I understand what the Councilman is saying, and throughout the state, cities have complained about this legislation, but, you know, I have to remind you that it is state legislation, so if you do not approve the implementing ordinance, the state law will stay in effect, the city will have to comply with it, and the city will have to comply with the existing density bonus ordinance that it has on the books. And the reason why planning is bringing this to you is so that the city's codes can be made consistent with the state law, and so that there are procedures and there are no inconsistencies. Otherwise, you still have to comply with the state law, you still have to give these density bonuses.
Saying it's about what sort of housing we build, Los Angeles City Council President Eric Garcetti presents his perspective on the issue of what State Senate Bill 1818 will and will not do.
We're not going to save a single building from getting demolished by not implementing 1818. So I want to underscore again, no matter what happens with this, the importance, and we're certainly hearing this from our friends and the communities, the neighborhood associations, neighborhood councils, also from our affordable housing preservationists, that we've got to do something about those demolitions. What this does is, if something does get demolished, it inserts some affordable units in what gets built. If we don't pass 1818, zero units get built that are affordable in what replaces what gets demolished. And I want to say that again, because I think we're mixing apples and oranges sometimes. There's no prohibition from people knocking down rent-stabilized apartments right now and building something new. The current law, they don't have to do anything affordable. This law adds at least some affordable units, which is not going to solve the housing crisis, but for those 10 families or whoever, those are 10 more Angelenos who don't have to contribute to traffic, who can live in a neighborhood, et cetera. That's point number one. Number two, I appreciate the picture that Mr. Rosendahl, that you showed us, that picture that right now, there's no protection next to an R1 zone for building something like that. The way we have written this now would be a protection if we implement. If we fail to implement, there's no protection. Implementing with that exact picture actually protects that home right next to it from that monstrosity not happening again. And that's also an important clarification, because when we keep saying 1818 is going to make more of these, this is happening without the 1818 today. Neighborhoods need to know that, communities need to know that, and precisely because we're as appalled in our own neighborhoods with things like that happening, we changed the law that was drafted by the planning department to prohibit that. So I don't want us to say that 1818 is going to produce that. It's different, and it actually helps what you have said that you want, and I know that we want as well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. All right, now, we are prepared to vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
All right.
Now, because the vote was not unanimous this time, it was continued one week to February 20th, when 10 votes will be needed to pass the density bonus program. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And if you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at Room 395 in City Hall, or by calling 213-978-1046, or of course by dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend ending February 15th, 2008. On behalf of Chris Kalnun and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for next Council Week in Review.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for February 22, 2008. We are in the John Foraro Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall. The City Council meets here at 10:00 a.m. every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The first Friday of the month, we move to Van Nuys City Hall, but otherwise, we are here in Council Chambers. I'm City Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Jose Uizar, Councilmember Bernard Parks, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, Councilmember Herb Wesson, and Councilmember Dennis Zine. We are waiting the other Council members to join us in Council Chambers, but as is customary, on Fridays, we have a series of presentations for notable teams, groups, and individuals who have distinguished themselves in the city or have been of great service to Los Angeles, and we will be hearing from some of those presentations shortly. I wanted to welcome our viewers on Channel 35. We are broadcast on Channel 35 through the city's cable system, live, and then rebroadcast each evening. We're also available online through webcast@lacy.org and through your telephones by calling 213-621-CITY. It's 213-621-CITY, and you can listen to the audio proceedings of the full council or any of our committees. We have also agendas in the back of the items we will be voting on today. Those are available 72 hours in advance, and if the public would like to speak on any of those items, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to get that in the mix. You can also give comments of a general nature on items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction during general public comment as well. With that, we will begin our presentations, and I'd like to start by recognizing Councilmember from the 8th District, the Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Bernard Parks.
I'd ask Herb Wesson to come up and join me, and also Jan Perry. Today, we are very pleased, as part of our ongoing program of honoring people within our community, but also specifically dealing with our Black History Month presentations that we have today, a family of legends in the music and the community impact. And we'd like to ask at this time for Eloise Laws to come up, Ronnie Laws, Hubert Laws, and Brenda Laws, Deborah, I'm sorry, Deborah Laws, to come up at this time. Also, I'd like to make everyone know that the Laws family, although basically centralized in Houston, we have two of their family members here in Los Angeles. Donna Laws, a professor at West Los Angeles College in Culver City in sports medicine and therapy, and also Blanche McConnell, who is the General Manager of Angeles Funeral Home, which is in the 8th District. Obviously, we're pleased that they're here to join. So we'd like to ask our four honorees to come up, and then we'd like to ask the family members to come up at this time to join us. Come on up. And what we'd like to do is, before we go into the individual presentations, we have about a three-minute DVD, I think that's the right term? DVD, it's not a 45 or a 78, but we'd like to play this to give you a flavor of what this family is all about in the music industry.
(singing) This is tenderness, having you here with me. Real tenderness. Listen to the moonlight jangle in your eyes. I'll put on that red dress you like and dance for you.
Right, ladies and gentlemen. Women who really have the blues. Came home this morning, oh, what a shine. When he brought out his keys, no longer fit my lock, oh, babe. Hold on, hold on. Change is gone, change is gone. Hold on, hold on. Don't worry about it, man. Now, that's your business, do whatever you want to do. If it don't work out, happiness is your desire. I know it's mine. Inside of yourself, you hold the key. Just have faith in what you're doing. Be yourself, and you'll be free. All my love is all I have.
And my dreams are very special.
All my life, I looked for you.
And today, my dreams come true.
You need me, and I need you.
Loving us is very special.
The things you seem to do, diva.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask, first of all, for Eloise to come up, because I have the honor of presuming her resolution. First of all, I'll just give you a little snippet, is that Eloise is an award-winning vocalist, a Broadway actress. She recently has a new CD entitled Secrets, in which she has displayed her very unique style and versatility. Her distinct vocal expressions can be heard on several classic Capitol Liberty ABC recordings, produced by such luminaries as Ronnie Laws, Holland Dozier-Holland, Linda Creed, and Andre Fisher. Never to one to rest on her laurels, she continues to perform at music festivals, including the Playboy Jazz Festival, the Long Beach Jazz Festival, among many others, and she's won the prestigious Cherry Bosom Award from the Tokyo Music Festival. She's also an original lead cast member and co-wrote the highly-successful Tony-nominated play It Ain't Nothing But the Blues, which had its world premiere in the Denver Center Theater Company. She opened on Broadway with great bravado in the Lincoln Center Beaumont Theater. It garnered four Tony nominations, and Ms. Laws received the Drama Desk nomination for Best Actress in a Musical. She also received a coveted Helen May's nomination for performance at the Kennedy Center, and she continues to receive critical acclaim, performing with the blues across country. Her other theatrical roles underscores her exceptional versatility. They include Bloody Mary and South Pacific, Madame Tango and House of Flowers, multiple roles in The Candidate, and most recently as... Are you going to help me on this one?
We're zero. We're zero.
We're zero.
Kana.
Kana, in the Met premiere production of The Return, amongst others. She also starred in the film Beat Runner, and was screened under Star Power Program of Palm Springs International Festival for short films. Currently, she's performing internationally as a solo artist and an integral part of the Laws family with her multi-talented siblings. I just would like to... Where's my certificate? There we go. I'd like to present, in behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, to Eloise Laws, and I want to tell you, my favorite is... What is it? Incredible.
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 And you are incredible.
Incredible. I'd like to present that to you.
Thank you. Do I say it again? Well, with all of those accolades, I guess you could say I've been around quite a long time, but I'd like to say first, good morning to the City Council. Councilman Parks, Ms. Perry, Herb Wesson. It is indeed an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to stand before you this morning and to receive this honor. It makes all of the hard work over the years worth all of the hard work that I've put in. And I will keep on doing what I do best, and that is singing, acting, and performing. Once again, I am indeed honored, and I thank you from the bottom, the depths of my heart, and God bless you. Thank you.
Well, I have the honor of recognizing another remarkable woman, Deborah Laws. Deborah, come on up here, Deborah. There you are. All right, Deborah began her professional career as a young teenager, when she was a featured vocalist on several tracks from the landmark jazz fusion album Friends and Strangers, recorded by Brother Ronnie Laws. She was born in Houston and was the seventh of eight children from this enormously talented family, and she currently resides in California. And while she isn't touring with Hubert, Ronnie, or Eloise, she often accompanies Michael Henderson and Norman Connors. She has been around the world with Rita Marley, Shaba Ranks, Cool in the Gang, the Commodores, and Third World, among other groups. Her festival performances include the Berklee Jazz Festival, the Long Beach Jazz Festival, the Dream Music Festival, the Pasadena Jazz Festival, and London's Wembley Black Music Festival. Now, let's see, we're going to have to get you the Central Avenue Jazz. Yeah, you know, I don't see that on the list here. Okay, all right, so we're going to have to get that to the list, all right? You know, you're never too big just to come home. All right, okay. Deborah has also performed at Carnegie Hall, the House of Blues, the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion, the Forum, the Hollywood Bowl, and recently Platinum Live with Eloise. I am very proud to stand next to her and join in the celebration of her body of work and of her family's body of work. She's a woman of enormous talent and has made an enormous impact on all people she has encountered, so I am proud to join Mr. Parks and Wesson and the entire City Council in commending her and her entire family and giving the best wishes for future success.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. It's kind of heavy. Okay, we'll go in the back. Okay, great. We'll go in the back. Say it nice and quick.
I know, I was told I have to say something. I want to thank you to the City Council for having my family here, for being a part of this Black History Month celebration, and to thank you, and it is indeed an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. It's always a joy to participate in these presentations with Councilman Bernard Parks, because when he scripts it out for you, he gives you real big, bold letters so that you can read it, so it lets me know that his eyesight is probably comparable to mine, which is terrible. Anyway, with that said, it is an honor to be here to recognize people that you grew up listening to and people that you know. Eloise and her husband's in the back, you can see him, the tall, distinguished-looking gentleman. Ricky, he's my attorney, so I've got to say good things about his family so I get a good rate whenever I need to use his services.
I don't know about that.
I have the honor... Hubert says, "I don't know about that." Oh, no, yeah. I have the honor to present to you Hubert Laws, who was born in Houston, the second of eight children. He came into a musical family. His grandfather played harmonica, and his mother played gospel music on the piano. His classical training got underway in high school, and he later enrolled in Southern University in their music department, where he studied, I want to say, classical music. From there, he wound up going to joining the Jazz Crusaders. He came to Los Angeles, where he won a scholarship at the Juilliard School of Music in New York. After he completed his studies at New York, and he completed it under the tutelage of renowned flutist Julius Baker. But this is where it gets good for me. He grew up directly across the house, the street from him, was what we called in the days, a honky-tonk. And I mean, anybody, I wish I could have grown up next to a honky-tonk. I grew up next to a school. Maybe I'd be playing piano or singing, singing with you guys. But he's had such great experiences and had an opportunity to meet with so many people. I just want to share with you some of them, if I can find them on the notes. I mean, no, with the great ones. Quincy Jones, Miles Davis, My Namesake, Herbie Hancock, Chick Corea, Ella Fitzgerald, Sarah Vaughan, Freddie Hubbard, Paul McCartney, Paul Simon, Aretha Franklin, Lena Horne, Sergio Mendes, just to name a few. This entire family has brought so much joy and happiness to the world, that it is fitting that on this day, in Black History Month, that we honor the Laws family, and I'm proud to present to Hubert Laws a framed certificate from the City of Los Angeles, signed by every elected official in the greatest city on the planet. Now, I'm going to ask Mr. Raised Across the Street from a Honky Tonk to come up and say a few words.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. You know, as we stand here, well, first of all, I don't want to be redundant by saying the things that my sister and those before me have said, so I'll just continue on by saying this. You know, you hear all of the names that you recognize, and we get a lot of attention because we're in the spotlight, but really, the supporting cast members are very rarely recognized, and many persons who don't have names, who are very responsible for the success of people like those who are in the spotlight, go unnoticed. But I sort of turned around as we stood here, and I looked at a person who really spearheaded the move of our family to this city, Los Angeles. And I thought about her, and I say, you know, she probably won't be mentioned, name won't be recognized, but she's one among many who are responsible for the success of many who you see touted with all the accolades. So I would like to, with my brief moment here, to have you recognize someone who's a member of our family. She spearheaded the move to Los Angeles, and she's my aunt. I stayed with her when I had no money, I had no place to stay, and as a matter of fact, I was lying across my bed when I saw an ad in the newspaper announcing that, the audition for the scholarship to Juilliard. And she supported me, and I just would like to recognize her and have her be to...
This is totally spontaneous. I had no idea I was going to do this, but I want to recognize and have her represent those like her who help people like us to become famous in your eyes.
This is my Aunt Lil.
I'm just thankful that I was able to be able to be by their side when they needed me. And I stand for my brother, who is their father, and I know he's shouting for joy wherever he is, because he used to always say, "This is my joy," when he'd hear them sing a play. He said, "This is my joy, and thank God, this is my joy." Thank you all.
So I'm not going to say anything else. My brother-in-law, Ricky, told me not to say anymore, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, I'd like to, before I get to the baby boy, Ronnie, I'd like to also announce that the Laws family is going to give each member of council a DVD so that you remember this day as well as they do. Our last honoree is Ronnie Laws, a native of Houston, Texas, born in 1950, the third in a famous line of four musicians that includes his classically-trained jazz flutist brother Hubert, his vocalist sisters Eloise and Deborah. Laws taught himself to play alto sax at the age of 11. After an eye injury sidelined early dreams of a career of professional baseball. Partially to fulfill his bomb's dream of playing the horn, his instrument became his all-consuming passion. He studied music in high school at the Stephen F. Austin State in Texas Southern University, developing a progressive mastery and technique. In 1970, he moved to Los Angeles, where he found work under the tutelage of such legendary talents as the Jazz Crusaders, Umas Akela. His formative training also included stints with jazz pianist Walter Bishop Jr. and organist Doug Kahn. He was a member of the '70s' most revered soul group, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, where he played tenor and soprano sax for a two-year stint before finally venturing out to pursue a solo career. Assisted by the immortal jazz great Donald Byrd, he soon signed for his first recording contract with Blue Notes Records, resulting in an impressive debut album, Pressure Sensitive, in 1975, produced by family friend Wayne Henderson, a founding member of the jazz pioneer, contemporary jazz pioneers, the Crusaders. Which, this album rapidly emerged to become the longest-selling album at the time in its 42-year history of the label. Pressure Sensitive was followed up by his second album, Fever, in 1976. He is proven natural at combining the exploratory art and heart of jazz with the broader-reaching strands of soul and pop. His first hit, Always There, credited as Ronnie Laws and pressure on the original 45, for young people, that's when it was on a small piece of plastic, was one of the most popular sax-driven crossover hits of the '70s, jazz funk fusion eras. He ushered in the sensational sensation of soprano sax in quiet storm gems such as Grace, Carmen, Just Love, Pressure Sensitive, Fever, and Friends and Strangers on Blue Note 1978. The track, the title track of his third album also propelled to gold status. Ronnie was offered a recording contract with HDH Records. He soon released Dream a Little, post yet another sound in the multi-talented artist's already-expanding repertoire in pursuit of newer, broader, and unexplored territory, urban contemporary. I'd like to present to you the baby boy, Ronnie Laws.
It's a great privilege and a pleasure to be here, and it's indeed an honor. Actually, I was honored a little earlier, two months ago, I became a grandfather. But this is the icing on the cake, and as was said earlier, I wish my dad was here, our father was here to witness this, because certainly, he was the backbone of the family. And my Aunt Lil, sort of, as my brother was remarking earlier, she had a great deal to do with our success. When my wife and I first moved here from Texas, she helped us out. Once again, we had no money, but she helped us with furniture and the whole thing, and really helped us get situated in Los Angeles. And so, once again, it's a real privilege to be here. Thank you for honoring us, and thank you once again.
Yes, colleagues, I'd just like, one more time, to present the Laws family. Thank you, Mr. Parks and other council members and Laws family. Congratulations. Our next presentation, Mr. Jose Uizar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's a great honor for me to stand in for my colleague, Councilmember Tony Gardinas, who's unfortunately out ill today. We are here today to announce the grand opening here in Los Angeles at the Dominican Republic Council at... here in Los Angeles at the Dominican Republic Consulate General Office, who will be opening at Councilmember Tony Cárdenas's district. We're also here today to recognize Dominican Republic Council General, Celeste Jiménez, who will speak to us in a few moments. You know, after 30 years of being in the city of San Francisco, the Dominican consulate moved to the greater Los Angeles area understanding the many cultural, economic, and geographical advantages that Southern California has to offer. They have identified over 30,000 Dominicans within California, Arizona, Nevada, and Utah, but they strongly believe that by moving to Los Angeles, their numbers will increase. Celeste Jiménez Peña, Council General of the Dominican Republic in California and the U.S. Western Region, earned a BA in Industrial Technology and Engineering from the Universidad Católica Madre in the Dominican Republic, and a BA in Business Administration from the New Mexico Institute of Mining and Technology. As Council General, she fosters the positive relationship that exists between the Dominican Republic and the United States. She is the founder of the Homemakers Association, a Dominican nonprofit organization dedicated to the personal, economical, and political advancement of women. According to the Council General, Celeste Jiménez, who has been the council for only three years, in this very short period of time, California has become the biggest contributor to the Dominican Republic. Just recently, the island was affected by a hurricane, and we are very proud to say that the best support came from right here in the city of Los Angeles. So ladies and gentlemen, please help me in welcoming and giving a big City of Los Angeles applause to our Council General for the Dominican Republic, Celeste Jiménez Peña. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. I prefer speaking Spanish, because everybody told me here, everybody can understand Spanish. And for me, it's more easy speaking Spanish. I'm so sorry. La República Dominicana hoy está... estamos aquí, la comunidad dominicana de Los Ángeles, con esta comisión, que es bueno resaltar, que es la primera vez en la historia que nuestros legisladores nos acompañan aquí al sur de California.
The Dominican Republic community is very happy to be here with the Los Angeles community, which is, this is the very first time that we're able to be here with you guys, and it's a pleasure for inviting us, thank you.
La República Dominicana vive momentos culminantes en su historia.
Dominican Republic is going through a great changes in its history.
Tenemos un gobierno democrático, republicano y representativo.
We have a democratic, republican, and representative government.
Y donde funcionan los poderes del estado con absoluta independencia.
And the powers of the state are functioning with complete independence.
Tenemos un congreso electo por la voluntad absoluta del pueblo dominicano.
We have an elected Congress by the absolute will of the population of the Dominican Republic.
Donde impera un pluralismo ideológico.
Where we have an ideological pluralism.
Y donde hombres y mujeres se esmeran por legislar en beneficio de los más caros y los más nobles intereses de nuestra nación.
Where men and women strive to legislate on behalf of the most noble and the highest people of our country.
Nuestros legisladores hoy aquí presente nos dan la gran oportunidad de presentarle al sur de California.
The legislators present with us here today are giving us a great opportunity to present to the members of Southern California.
Y básicamente a este país que ha creado su civilización en base a la libertad, a la democracia, y al desarrollo.
And basically to this country that has created this country and their civilization based on liberty and freedom.
Y nos permiten a través de todos ellos presentarle a ustedes cuánto.
And this allows us to present, through all of them, present to you how much we...
Cuánto ha avanzado la República Dominicana en democracia.
How much the population has advanced in the Dominican Republic as far as democracy.
Eso es hermoso, y por eso nosotros hoy aquí queremos presentarle el ejemplo que son ellos.
And that's a beautiful thing. And that's why here, with you today, we want to present to you the great example that they are.
De que nuestro país vive en una completa democracia.
That our country is living in a total democracy.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias, y de parte de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles y el concejal, Tony Cárdenas. Le damos la gran bienvenida a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, y esperamos trabajar juntos por muchos años para beneficiar no solamente los dominicanos, pero también los ciudadanos de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Bienvenida, gracias.
Gracias, muy amable.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, we have a special treat today. We have a dance troupe. Please welcome the Flocorico Dominicano, who will perform a traditional Dominican dance as they show the proud culture from the Dominican Republic.
Attention! Para que el pueblo pueda bailar todo día. Para que el viejo baile con la vieja mía.
Thank you very much, muchísimas gracias. I know Mr. Weza has a second presentation as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think we should do that every Friday, what do you think?
Absolutely.
La isla de alegría, Dominican Republic. Gracias, muchísimas gracias. I'll be joined up here by Councilmember Ed Reyes. And we will now make a presentation commemorating the 40th anniversary of the high school walkouts here in the city of Los Angeles, which marked one of the largest demonstrations by students ever in the history of the United States in one location. And I'm joined here today by the committee that has been working diligently to commemorate this 40th anniversary. We have a number of members here today. Lupe Guillén, Irene Esparsa, Bobby Verdugo, who was actually there, Ruben Chávez, Caroline Romero, Elizabeth Vermaat, Mita Curón. Mita was also a participant 40 years ago, from Garfield High School. Go Bulldogs! Tony Osbon, Sal Castro, and Elsa Cisneros. Ladies and gentlemen, many of us have read about the walkouts that happened in 1968 here at the Los Angeles Unified School District. For those of you who recall, it was a significant part of our history where many brave young students walked out of their schools to protest the lack of curriculum that showed the history of Mexican-Americans, Chicanos, Latinos. Also, they were protesting the lack of available courses for those students who wanted to go on to college. They also were there for the general belief that in many of the schools, the ability for these students to express their culture, speak Spanish, and speaking Spanish was being denied. Although we've come a long way, we have a lot more work to do. In fact, when I was on the Board of Education a few years ago, one of the most important policy issues that I worked on at the time was to ensure that every student who attended an alley USD school had access to the A-through-G courses, those courses necessary to attend a Cal State or UC campus. It's very unfortunate that in this day and age, we still have to work hard to ensure that those options are available for many of our students, particularly those students who attend our high schools in low-income communities. What these students did back in 1968 was very brave, it was bold, and opened up the doors for many, many more students to come. I, as a very proud immigrant who came to this country as a young boy, am a direct beneficiary of those struggles, those protests, that these students exhibited that day in 1968 when they decided to show the world and show the United States that there's a lot more we need to do to ensure that this country stands up to equal opportunity for all. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm very proud to stand here with these people who will commemorate the 40th anniversary of the walkouts by a reenactment that will take place this March 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., starting in front of Abraham Lincoln High School and concluding with a plaque dedication at Hazard Park. We hope that with this plaque dedication at Hazard Park, we could go visit it, get inspired, and remember that today we have a better world because there were some students in 1968 who decided to stand up and say, "No más, we've got to change the way we are now being given our education." So ladies and gentlemen, please join us, March 8th from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. And now, I would like to introduce my colleague, Councilmember Ed Reyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We saw her as a former school board member, president of the school board. It's appropriate that the type of chronology and history that you are expressing should be repeated over and over again. When we look at today's conditions, it's a heartbreak to say not much has changed. When you look at the level of dropouts that currently exist, when you look at who is being absorbed for this so-called war in another country, you look who's dying at disproportionate rates, many parallels to the Vietnam War back then, in 68, when the young people walked out of Lincoln High School and all the other schools in the East Side. We have today that's different, though. As we have role models, we have people who are coming back. The founder of the AARP, the greatest, largest organized volunteer group for seniors, was the principal of Lincoln High School. And this past few weeks, as a matter of fact, last week, we had a presentation where they came back to Lincoln High School, donated money, fixed the auditorium, provided instruments, and supported a music program that will hopefully give kids a reason to continue staying in school through music and art. Yesterday, we had a tragic shooting in the Northeast. These are youngsters who perhaps did not finish high school, were involved in gang culture, and so those conditions continue to prevail in the Northeast. So we can't forget why it happened. We have to continue reminding those of us who are elected office at the federal, state, county, and city level that we have benefited from those struggles, and we have to create the change. It's our responsibilities as elected officials. It's our responsibility, those generations who've become professionals, who've become doctors and lawyers, given all the support systems that existed then that do not exist today. That is what we have to keep reiterating. So thank you so much for being here today. It's a pleasure to be here with Sal Castro and all the leaders. I went to school with Jimmy, Sal's younger, one of his sons. And I want to thank him for continuing putting pressure on us. Excuse me, Ed, I need buses for this. We have a conference in the state. We have these kinds of functions for our youth. You can't forget, we need you. So thank you, Sal, for maintaining that pressure and for reminding all of us, who are elected officials, the responsibilities we have to our youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And to the committee and to Sal Castro, we have with us a resolution from the City of Los Angeles, signed by all the council members, our mayor, Antonio Villarreal, to present to Sal Castro and the committee for your hard work, for your dedication. And we must never forget what happened, and it will remind us how much more work we have to do ahead. Thank you very much. And now, we were here from one of the leaders of that time and someone who continues to do the work that he was doing at that time, even as a student. He continues to provide a forum for students to go learn more about college. When I was on the school board, he was calling me for buses to get students out there. But ladies and gentlemen, as Mr. Reyes said, and we look at our dropouts, and we look at the lack of opportunity in many of these low-income communities, it is programs like these and the work that Sal Castro does and others that opens the doors and makes a better life for these students and for all of us. Because indeed, if we are to become a better society, a better community, a better city, we need everyone participating. And those doors of opportunity must be opened for everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, Sal Castro.
Thank you, Councilman Weza and Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Councilman Uizar and Ed Reyes. It's always an honor and pleasure to be here at this, in this chamber. I wasn't here, but the first city council was composed of a lot of Mexicans, including Julián Chávez, Agustino Olvera, este Roberto Aguinaldo. So we've come a long way even after 1850, because not only did we have a city councilman by the name of Julián Chávez, but also he became later a board of supervisor member, and still later he was mayor, and still later he donated part of his ranch to fight smallpox here in Los Angeles. I wish we would name different buildings and different sites at some of the early Californianos that founded this city. And somebody mentioned that not too much has changed. Hell, yes, a lot has changed. I see a very handsome man over there, Dr. Cardenas, the councilman. I see another handsome gentleman up there, Eric Garcetti. I see another handsome gentleman over there, Dr. Cardenas. Two handsome gentlemen here, Dr. Uizar and, yeah, Uizar and Dr. Reyes. And then I mentioned, I think, I don't know if I mentioned Dr. Alarcon. A hell of a lot has changed. Not only that, but today we have a Hispanic caucus back in Washington. And are you kidding? You go to Sacramento and you go to see a sea of brown faces. A lot has changed. Heck, yes, you look at television and there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of, a bunch of brown faces staring at you, telling you about the weather and the news. Yes, things have changed. We might not have made the changes in schools, but as much as we have wanted to, because sad to say, the dropouts were about 57, 60% in 1968, they're still there today. And I'm a name dropper. When I went to visit President Clinton in 1996 at the White House, I told him, "My President," I thought I was Marlon Brando in the movie Viva Zapata, "my President, we still lead the nation in high school dropouts, college dropouts, and have the dubious distinction of leading the nation in teen pregnancies." That has to change. That has to change, very much so. And again, thank you very much, and hopefully you'll all join us in the commemoration of the urban Chicano civil rights movement. Sometimes we throw the word civil rights out, and we always think of our brothers and sisters, including Rosa Parks and Dr. Martin Luther King and H. R. Brown and Malcolm X. But there was a parallel movement, known as the Chicano Civil Rights Movement, where we had Silvio Mendez fighting for desegregation back in 1946. We had families in 1933 fighting for desegregation. I'll go back to the Silvio Mendez case, which is very interesting. They desegregated Westminster, California, Orange County, are you serious? Back in 1946. And because they did that, three lawyers from the NAACP came over to inquire how, what was the argument that they made in being able to desegregate the schools. These three African-American lawyers from the NAACP included Thurgood Marshall. Does that ring a bell? So in part, the most, more famous, 1954, Topeka, Kansas, Brown versus Board of Education in part was there, Silvio Mendez was there in spirit and the family. And we appreciate working with Dr. Park and all our other brothers and sisters who fight for civil rights, and as we will continue to do so. Muchisimas gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon would like to add his good wishes. El doctor Alarcon.
Yeah, I just want to say to Sal Castro and all the committee members that more important than the elected officials that Sal is so gracious to point out is that this was a people's movement. In fact, your movement in 1968 was what inspired me to get involved in student politics in the San Fernando Valley when there were no student body presidents who were Latino in any of the schools in the San Fernando Valley. And so your work to inspire a people's movement in the educational system is more important than the accomplishments of elected officials. It's important that we recognize that in an American democracy, everybody has a role to play and everybody should be an active participant in that democracy. So I commend you, I thank you, and recognize you for inspiring me personally to try and see some of the same things that you were crying for in 68. And even today, we have those same exact struggles, but you have inspired so many people. And I hope that it's more than just elected officials, but all people who need to recognize their role in improving our educational system. Thank you.
And I may just add a quick word as well. Wanted to just thank you, Sal, and the entire group. I'm here because of you. My grandfather and grandmother grew up in Boyle Heights, a time when they couldn't swim in the pools at the same time as everybody else, when they were denied an education that was equal to other parts of the city. And we are here because of the work that you have done and the vision that you have inspired all of us to be a part of. We never forget that every single day, and I want to thank councilmembers Uizar and Reyes for commemorating. This is living history. We have talked about history so much in these chambers, and we've celebrated that civil rights struggle that our brothers and sisters of all races have engaged in here. But we forget right in our backyard, we have these heroes and Chiros that are a part of not just Los Angeles history and Latino history and Chicano history, but American history. And we thank you for making America a better place because of all you've done.
Council President, you have one person I'd like to make a comment.
My name is Mita Cuaron, and I was a dropout at Garfield High School in 1968. I want to let the chambers know that because of Sal Castro and because of my parents, whose home was used as a sanctuary in East Los Angeles, because when the students walked out, they had nowhere to go. The church closed the doors on us, and our house was open. And there was a priest, a minister by the name of Father Luz, Episcopalian minister, who provided food, clothing, and money to help my parents house the hundreds of students who had no home to go to because our cities and our community was under siege. And I also want to dedicate to my father, who, at one of the Board of Education meeting, Mr. Ralph Cuaron, who in the Board of Education, when they didn't let Sal come into the board, they identified him as a student, right here in the front of LA Times. "Let Sal in," we all cried out, "let Sal in." And in honor of my father and my mother, Silvio Cuaron, I want to honor them because our house proved as a sanctuary. And one more comment. Robert F. Kennedy came to our aid and identified with our needs and our struggles. And as you see here, the students, Harry Gamboa, Paula Casostamo, were there when they met the late Senator Robert Kennedy. Our struggle continues. And I want you to know that two years ago, on the very grass knoll of City Hall, when the students walked out, were in the freeways, I left to meet them, whose parents were fearful to send their kids to school because they would be deported. And I met them, and I brought food and clothing to them, and I erected a tent to help them because they were out in the streets. I did this on my own time, communicating with Sal and other friends. Our struggle still continues. We have lots of work to do. Thank you.
Real quick, human interest, I want to leave, I want to end on a high note. 1968, the city championship football, Roosevelt versus Garfield. The Roosevelt won and won the city championship. The quarterback that day, Mario Esparsa, was already earmarked to take over Jim Plunkett's spot up at Stanford. Well, anyway, he was a player of the year. The Helms Athletic Foundation in those days, those of you that are young enough to remember the Helms Athletic Foundation, they were going to, they were going to give him an award. And I think, Tony, were you on that team, were you on that team with Roosevelt? But, eh, boy. So anyway, so Mario Esparsa got the city of the year award. Helms Athletic Foundation was coming to city council to give him an award. Art Snyder, our learned councilman, was also going to give him an award. But when the city council found out that this young man was one of the walkout leaders from Roosevelt, they said, "No, he can't come into the chamber." Well, that's not the end of the story. Hopefully, the city council will honor us maybe down the road, because Mario Esparsa today is a federal lawyer in New Mexico, Las Cruces, and he'd be glad to come to accept the award now. And we hope to get the award also from the IAC, from LA City Schools that I belong to. And thank you very much. And his sister's here, by the way, let's give her a hand.
Thank you, Sal. And I just want to share that because of the families supporting my brother Mario Esparsa, he was on, able to go on to UCLA Law School as well. And we're so proud that the families came together, supported our youngsters, and we were out there making sure that our youth didn't get in trouble. And we're still here fighting on behalf of the community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to welcome Mayor Antonio Villarosa to join us.
Rough rider as well as phantom. He was a spook from Cathedral too, with me.
You know, let me just say, I was here to make another presentation with Councilmember Reyes, but when I look at the faces of the people here and particularly of Sal, you know, I was 15 years old at Cathedral High School. Lalo and I were, I think you were a freshman then, and helped to start the United Mexican-American Students there, founded that organization, along with the Black Student Union, as a matter of fact. And I can tell you that working with UMAS back then as a young boy, I can tell you, everything I am today, I am because there was, there were walkouts, there was a civil rights movement, the Voting Rights Act that opened up the country to us. I want to acknowledge the committee, the leaders back then, who really put the spotlight of the city, the state, and the nation on the quality of our schools on the East Side, on the need for access to good education. And the leadership that came out of here are a who's who in our community, the people who grew out of those struggles. So I want to acknowledge Sal and all of the committee, and thank you for your great work.
Mr. President, if you indulge me, and one final speaker. Thank you very much. We have a very important announcement here.
Thank you again for everything. My name is Bobby Verdugo, and I was a senior at Lincoln, one of Sal's students back in 68. Like Mita, I also dropped out in my senior, in my senior year. And it was something that I'm not very proud of, but you know, I didn't give up, and it was because of this man that I was able to go to UCLA, even though I didn't have a high school diploma with a high potential program. But with all the degrees that, well, I have one degree, but all the awards that have been given throughout the years, I'm a social worker now, I work with teen fathers, you know, and all the things that I have gotten, there's going to be one thing that's going to happen this June that I'm going to be probably most proud of. And because of Sal, 40 years later, I'm actually going to be able to walk on the stage of Lincoln High School with my, with the senior class of 2008, 40 years later, to finally be acknowledged that I'm a high school graduate. Thank you. Thank you, Sal.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize the mayor and Mr. Reyes for a special presentation as well. While we are transitioning, colleagues, if I could have your attention, we also wanted to present to Councilmember Alarcon a special certificate. It weighs a little bit less than Camila Isabella Alarcon, who was born on February 8th, but we wanted to give our congratulations on his newborn daughter on behalf of the city council. Congratulations.
Thank you, Council President. It's always a pleasure to have the mayor join us here in these chambers. Distinct honor to again provide this opportunity to acknowledge a great team. Our mayor Villarosa.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes, and it's a love coming back here. Feel like I'm, you know, at home. Thank you for allowing me to come to the chamber today, Mr. President, members of the council, Councilmember Reyes. It's great to be here. And I don't make many presentations, but I'll tell you, I'm very proud of Loyola High School. I'm particularly proud of its efforts to kind of create men for others, men, young men who come from every part of the region, not just the city, every part of the metropolitan area. Some come from wealthy homes, some from the poorest in the city. They're all Loyola boys. They have a commitment to education that's second to none, a commitment to sports and team that's second to none, a long and illustrious sports program over the years. You heard Sal say that I was a phantom, and I was, and we played Loyola oftentimes, and usually, well, I won't say usually they won, but they won more often than not. I do have some phantom pride. But, yeah, we both went to the Cathedral as a matter of fact. But I'll tell you something, these boys couldn't be a greater bunch of kids, I'll tell you. And Lalo Diaz, the coach of this team, has been a longtime friend of mine. We also went to Cathedral together, as a matter of fact. And can I bring you up here, Lalo, for a second? And we're so proud of this team because, if you remember, we brought them here a few times in the last few years. As a matter of fact, they've won three state championships in the last six years, 11 consecutive mission title championships, and that's just in cross-country. But as you well know, we brought them here when they've won CIF championships in football. We brought them here when they've excelled in basketball and the many, many other sports. This particular team not only won the state championship, but won, was eighth in the nation. And I can tell you, that is no small feat. When you look at the number, the size of the school, to have that kind of excellence and accomplishments, it really says so much about this team. It's a team that's always focused on team. Athletics is important, but academics, the highest, is important as well. They have the highest service component of any school in the city, and obviously, the spiritual component as well. So I wanted to come by with Councilmember Reyes, who's so proud of these young men. I want to acknowledge them, first of all, the coaches, Lalo Diaz, Dr. Lalo Diaz, the head coach, Director Frank Mesa, the assistant coach, I don't think he's here with us, but he's the doctor for the team as well. Donald Lordz, the assistant coach, Frank Vargas, and James Slater. Let's give them all a big hand. But what you should also know, no other Los Angeles city school has ever won a single state cross-country title, and this is Loyola's third. So that's a great accomplishment. I want to acknowledge the boys that helped to make this happen, the young men, Daniel Brown, Andres Diaz, Elias Gedion, James Costelnick, Andrew Lordz, Anthony Millen, Connor Morris, Pablo Ruiz, James Patrick Slater, and Giancarlo Topete. Let's give them all a big hand.
You know, we speak of all the accomplishments in sports, but I know another side of Loyola. The past few years, we engaged this institution to talk about its expansion. They expanded and provided more buildings, more space for administration and classes. What they also did is improve the alleyways. It brought in lights. They had a community process where we engaged the local folks. And I got to tell you, the first meetings we had, the community wasn't too pleased because they felt that they were like on an island, they were dealing with a castle that did not engage the community. But in this process, that changed. It changed not only because physically they're not interconnected, but also because of how they invest their resources. When you look at the students... When you look at the students, they go out into the schools in the local areas, they provide tutoring, they engage various neighborhoods of all income groups. And so to me, that speaks a lot to the spirit of Loyola. It speaks to the leadership and the understanding that we are an international city, a multi-ethnic city, a city of many income groups, and they are living right in the middle of it. So I want to thank them for their leadership, Dr. Diaz, Lalo Diaz, you know, Lalo is short for Eduardo, so he's my tocayo in many ways. But at the same time, we got to understand that there's many more kids that should have these opportunities, and we can hope, we can duplicate the type of accomplishments Loyola has achieved throughout the city. So thank you, Loyola. Thank you, Mayor. And we're all very proud of what they do for our city. Congratulations.
And, just right before that, Mr. Weston wanted to add his good wishes as well.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'm connected to this great institution. My youngest son graduated in the year 2000 from Loyola. And I remember when I was going to the various high schools, trying to figure out where I was going to send my son. And at that time, there was Father Bennett was at the school, who's now Bishop Bennett. And he told me, he said, "You send us your son, and we'll send you back a man." And that's what Loyola does. I can remember at some orientation, they told my wife, my son forgot his lunch money, and she wanted to get the lunch money to him, and whoever she talked to said, "No, just don't let him eat today." He never forgot his lunch money again. They take boys and turn boys into men. And for Coach Diaz, who worked many years with a friend of mine, who was a great track coach, and Greg Wells, my son, Justin, participated on the track team as well, and he participated on the football team. And when I spoke to my son, Coach, and told him that you were here, he told me that, what is it called, Kairos? There's like a spiritual thing, it takes a week, and that you were one of the people that was in his group, which helped change his life. So I saw this little skinny kid of mine, who's now a graduate of UCLA, and all of that, a lot of that can be attributed to Loyola. And where it relates to the cross-country team, Mayor and Mr. Reyes, the reason why they're so good is because when they train, they run past my district office and they're inspired. Or maybe they just run faster because they figure I'm going to ask them to volunteer. But I'm proud of you and all you've done. And Coach, it's always a pleasure. You are a fine man, and it's a pleasure to see you. I congratulate you all. You know, thank you for saying that because I'm also the father of a Loyola High graduate who's now at Princeton. And I can tell you, it was the work ethic that Lalo Diaz and this cross-country team instilled in him. Because the reason why they're as good as they are is they practice every morning at 6:30 in the morning, and then every afternoon after school, they do so, what, eight, almost eight months out of the year, close to eight, because most of them also run track, so they do it virtually eight or nine months out of the year. These boys have that discipline, that work ethic, that team spirit. And so, behalf of Councilmember Reyes and all of you, and particularly to my good friend, Lalo Diaz, we want to thank you, Dr. Diaz, for really honing the skills of these young men. Yes, they're state champions, but they're also champions as human beings as well. So congratulations.
First of all, thank you so much on behalf of Loyola High School. And I'd like to bring up, if I may, our athletic director, Chris O'Conne. On behalf of Loyola High School, distinguished members of the city council, my beloved friend and mayor, I feel that our city is in great hands. And definitely, I was also one of the students influenced by Sal Castro, and I told him in the hallway, I said, "I would not be Dr. Diaz today if it weren't for his words." And I definitely want to squeeze that in there on behalf of my family as well. But we have presentations that we're going to make, and I know we're past our buzzer time here, but we would like to make presentations of our championship T-shirt, which, one of his press conferences during the fire, our mayor wore our T-shirt, and I got so many phone calls, "Why is he wearing Loyola High School cross-country?" And I said, "Well, he only wears state championship materials." But we thank, on behalf of the cross-country team, we thank you, on behalf of Loyola, and certainly the parents that are here present, and of course, they're the ones who bring them at 6:30. But I also want to point out the many connections here. My daughter graduated from UC Berkeley and has worked with Councilman Weisar. And Councilman Weisar's chief of staff was my very first cross-country project, Joe Avila, and I taught him and coached him. And he was number seven in the nation when he was a senior, and we have a T-shirt to present to him. But we will make the presentations. He was my first project.
Wow, I didn't know that. Number seven in the nation.
He was number seven in the nation, and he was the first of my show-up at 6:30 in the morning, 11 workouts a week. And I said, "This is easy." My first coaching job, and I have a number 10 qualifying runner, I said, "This is easy." But he got me off to a great start. And I'd like to thank Councilman Ed Reyes, who definitely, people ask me, "How is it that you can train at Loyola High School, which is in the shadow of Staples Arena? No mountains, no hills, it's blacktop, cement, and other teams, Dana Hills, who have the obvious terrain, and you have all the other schools that we compete against?" And they say, "How do you do it?" And we've never, in my 21 years at Loyola, had a concern as to the safety of these young men. And I attribute that certainly to the council and the watchful eye that, and you provide for us. Not present today is Councilman Labange. He was very instrumental in having Griffith Park noted as the official training site of Loyola High School. And we appreciate that because on Saturdays or any holidays that we have, any opportunity we have to get them off the streets, that's exactly where we take them, to Griffith Park. So obviously, in his absence, we'd like to also extend a thank you to Councilman Labange for that. But without further ado, on behalf of the cross-country team, our administration, Loyola High School, we thank you for this opportunity, and it's an honor that's well-deserved. These young men work very, very hard, and we are proud of them as they move on to college. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And congratulations again. It's my pleasure now to recognize the council member from the 10th District for a very While Mr. Weston is coming, will you call the roll? Adam Kirk.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today is one of my favorite days. It's Pet Adoption Friday. And today, we have the lovely, talented, three-year-old Chihuahua mix named Max. Max is looking for a home, and we were optimistic that if we brought him and put him before you today, that someone would naturally fall in love with him. He does little tricks if you give him a treat, a trick, a treat, he does little tricks. But I kind of missed my moment because I was doing something with Councilman Parks. And it's my understanding that he may have already charmed someone in the hallway that's going to adopt him, someone who really wants to have a companion animal that they can receive unconditional love from. So that's my understanding. But for those of you that are watching this on Channel 35, and anybody that's here in the audience today, don't fret if Max has a home because we've got hundreds of animals, dogs and cats and birds, rabbits, you name it, we have it. But if anybody is interested in Max, which I do not believe Max will last long because he's so cute, you can call 888-452-7381. Again, 888-452-7381, and that's to find a home for little Max here. Plus, Max is an excellent watchdog. I mean, so he may not be big, but he's got a great sense of, you know, smell, he hears well. So if somebody is in your apartment or home that's not supposed to be there, little Max will let you know. I also want to announce, and I want to commend, Councilmember Alarcon and the mayor's office, we're having a free spay and neuter program at City Hall on our south lawn that will be this Tuesday, starting at 7:30 a.m. So please, you know, if you're interested, call 888-452-7381 to get more information about our free spay and neuter day on the south lawn at City Hall. So with that said, if there's anybody that wants to take little Max home, you better jump on it quickly because I do not believe this young fella is going to last too long. Mr. President, members, thank you. I think we got a sell for Max, I think.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston, and I'm sure he will go quickly. So appreciate your good work there. We next will recognize from the 3rd Council District, Councilmember Dennis Zine. And from the 2nd Council District, Councilmember Wendy Grill.
Thank you, Mr. President, joined by my colleague Wendy Grill. We're going to be presenting the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials. And that is, the acronym is IAPMO. IAPMO, IAPMO.
I just wanted to figure out how to say that.
Yeah, IAPMO. And we have with us Russ Cheney, Executive Director. Step up here, Russ. Dwayne Husken, Director of Marketing and Communication. Where are you, Dwayne? Come on up here so we can see you. Oh, you're over there. You're Director of Marketing, Communication, and Photographer. Okay. He's on the ground, taking pictures. Jeff Beileau, Editor, Official Magazine, Senior Writer, Jeff? Is he here?
Jeff is, uh...
Not here. Mike Massey, Executive Director of the Plumbing Industry Progress Education and Trust Fund, Mike?
Actually, yeah.
You got the money, right?
I got it.
All right, he's the man, he's the money man. And Ed Salzberg, member. Ed?
Good morning.
And the rest of the folks here, Councilmember Grill and I are standing in for Councilmember Tony Cardenas. We have the distinct privilege of recognizing an organization that has played an instrumental role in the improvement and innovation in the fields of plumbing and sanitation on both a domestic and international scale. May 17, 1926, a small group of plumbing inspectors came together with the goal of formulating a model code that would protect the individuals they served from the inept plumbing practices that generated dangerous consequences to one's health. We take it all for granted now, but way back when, they didn't have the standards they have today. Following the leadership and the vision of the group's first president, Charles Collard, the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials was established with the dream to protect public health and safety through the development of uniform plumbing and mechanical codes. Presently, the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials focuses its comprehensive capabilities on the technical aspects of the plumbing and mechanical industries through its extensive knowledge base that consists of regulators, professional contractors, and various manufacturers. With its collective expertise, coupled with the collaboration with local government and industry, has created the Uniform Plumbing Code, a 450-page manual that sets the standard of safe plumbing. Page two, Wendy Grill.
Page two.
Page two. You want this one?
Well, no, I have my own. I'm prepared, yeah.
Okay, well, let me finish the official text. Okay, I thought we were going to share the text. The Uniform Plumbing Code is routinely cited as a versatile and easily-applied document that can be tailored to fit almost any nation's needs for ensuring drinking water safety and sanitary waste disposal. These codes are now designated as American national standards. Additionally, the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials has served the broader international community with the establishment of offices in seven countries worldwide. They assist with code development in such diverse places as Saudi Arabia, China, where they really need help, in China, I've been there, with the environment, India, Vietnam, Indonesia, the Philippines, Venezuela, Colombia, and the United Arab Emirates. In support of the World Plumbing Council, they have worked with the World Health Organization to bring sound and efficient plumbing systems to developing countries in need. With a strong international presence, they have been able to spread their expertise in the field of sanitation and plumbing globally, establishing consistent standards that improve the health of individuals in foreign countries who otherwise would be subject to hazardous practices. It is this dedication and commitment to protecting the health and safety throughout the world that warrants such gratitude and recognition from the city of Los Angeles today. Would now like to invite several individuals, Wendy Grill's going to speak first, and we're going to hear from individuals of the organization. And Wendy, before we hear from them, comments from you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and glad to be here today. And I'm the first to admit that I am not a plumbing expert and know even less about mechanical piping systems. But I have become very familiar with a surprising subject for a councilwoman, waterless urinals. But when it comes, thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. But when it comes to ensuring we have clean, safe water and sanitary systems, I defer to the experts who we are honoring here today. This means keeping our businesses, our homes, our schools, our hospitals, and all other buildings that we work and live in, safe and clean. And for that, we should all thank the hard-working men and women here today. IAPMO's work is truly lifesaving, and they are the world-recognized experts in protecting us through their hard work and through thorough codes. We take it for granted that the water we drink will be safe and that our health will be protected. It is in the many decades of work through IAPMO that allows us to take our clean water and public safety and sanitation for granted. I'm appreciative of IAPMO.
IAPMO. IAPMO. IAPMO. IAPMO.
IAPMO. Work today.
That's the first part of the plumbing test.
It's the first part of the test. And we have both failed, Dennis.
We failed that part.
I am equally impressed with the adoption, the international adoption of IAPMO, Plumbing and Mechanical Codes. I too can be trained. With assistance from IAPMO, many countries have used all portions, all or portions of their uniform plumbing code as the base for their own plumbing code. Their codes and services literally protect billions of people around the world, and with about one-half of the human population is protected by the provisions of the Uniform Plumbing Code. And so I wanted to be here today to thank the trades for all of their work, their dedicated public service, and working together to make sure that our water is safe and clean. And these codes sometimes can seem bureaucratic, what do we mean, how does it work? But we know, and they know, that it protects our lives. But we know and they know that it protects our lives. And they have been true leaders, not in just doing their job every day, but making sure that they save lives in other places and use their expertise to do that. So I'm pleased to stand here today with you, Mr. Zein, to salute IAPMO. There you go, I got it.
You got that right. And before we hear from the first speaker, Russ, the Executive Director, I just want to remind listeners, viewers, that when you go buy that bottled water, that doesn't have the same inspection that your tap water has. The tap water is inspected. Our Department of Water and Power inspects it throughout the country, it's inspected. So when we talk about clean water, we get clean water out of the tap. So many of us have become accustomed to the bottled water, but in reality, that is not inspected as we have the tap water inspected. But the first speaker, the Executive Director, Russ Chaney. Russ?
Thank you. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Good morning and thank you for permitting us some time to recognize the important contributions that the plumbing industry makes to protecting public health. And oftentimes, we're the butt of jokes in the plumbing industry. And I was just thinking, when the previous presentation was made about the little dog that was homeless but was likely to be adopted, and I started thinking about the people here with me today. We are all potty-trained and most of us are neutered. So we have ourselves addressed and we believe in what we do. And we want to thank you all for recognizing the contribution. You know, actually, the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials began almost 82 years ago, right here in the city of Los Angeles. As was noted, today, we are an international corporation. Our world headquarters is in Ontario, California. But in 1926, a group of Los Angeles plumbing inspectors recognized that there were no uniform requirements for the installation and maintenance of plumbing systems. And at that point in time, disease was rampant, a lot of it spread through improper sanitation. So it was through the leadership of the city of L.A. plumbing inspectors that recognized an organization was necessary and, more importantly, the development of a model code that could be uniformly applied was a necessity. So being recognized today at the L.A. City Council is truly coming back home. Today, as was noted, we do business on multiple continents. We maintain offices in China, Australia, India, and we're about to open an office in the United Emirates in Dubai. But our roots are in the United States. Today, we evaluate, we test, we develop criteria for products that are being imported into the United States. And that's a very, very important criteria because of concerns about lead content, deficient construction of products that are being made outside of our borders, and we take that role very seriously. Ms. Gabby Davis, who's with me here today. Gabby is the Senior Director of our Global Operations, and she heads up a lot of that work to ensure that the products and materials that enter the United States are safe. So let me...
We're going to have Mike Massey.
Great. But before I do that, if I could just thank you on behalf of our President, Ron Rice, and just to recognize, there's quite a few people with me here today. Many of them are inspectors at the city of L.A., the county of L.A. Some are engineers. Ed Salzberg was mentioned earlier. Ed is a founding member of the American Society of Plumbing Engineers, which was also formed right in this area. Roscoe King is here today. Roscoe is one of our instructors and has been a loyal participant in the development of the Uniform Plumbing Code over the years. Mike Massey is about to speak. Mike is a dear friend and has made huge contributions to the ongoing development of the IAPMO group. And also, I'd like to thank Amir Tabak for putting this together and really helping us make recognition on the important contributions that are made by the plumbing industry. And finally, just to thank Andrew Adelman, General Manager, L.A. Department of Building and Safety. Andrew, you have also been a loyal and dedicated supporter of the plumbing industry and, more importantly, of all of the people that you supervise by enabling them to participate in the ongoing development of our codes. So thank you so much. We are humble, we're honored to receive this great honor, and we look forward to our ongoing collaboration with the city of L.A. Thank you very much.
Mike Massey, Executive Director. Mike?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, honorable members of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Mike Massey. I am the Executive Director of the Piping Industry Progress and Education Trust Fund, more commonly known as P.I.P.E. We represent over 15,000 active union members in Southern California and over 500 union contractors in the plumbing, piping and HVAC industries. For us, our most important document is the Union Labor Agreement that covers our industry. But the next most important document for us are the Uniform Plumbing and Mechanical Codes produced by IAPMO. And we applaud and commend you for honoring IAPMO today. I have been a member of IAPMO since 1989. I recently completed a five-year term on the IAPMO Standards Council, which is a group of nine individuals that must have sufficient industry knowledge to vote on the final issuance of the IAPMO codes, hear all of the appeals, on the content of the codes and appoint over 60 industry representatives to the technical committees. And I want to tell you that my service on the IAPMO Standards Council was a special highlight of my career to date. Now, I serve as a member of the brand-new IAPMO Green Technical Committee. I have the opportunity to shape the content of what are already the best codes in the world for the critically important task of conserving water and energy and to continue the development of codes for sustainable construction. I am also the Chief Executive of the National Inspection Testing and Certification Corporation. We have a contract with IAPMO and we certify plumbing and mechanical inspectors in cities, counties, states and worldwide. We also have an ISO 9001, 2000 Quality Management System that's provided by IAPMO's registration unit. So I know very well how important IAPMO is to public safety and health. As Wendy said, we can all take it for granted that our domestic water will be clean and that our sanitary plumbing systems will protect us because IAPMO's codes are developed by experts who are deeply devoted to protecting public safety and health. IAPMO's codes are designated as American national standards by the American National Standards Institute. The ANSI process requires full transparency and open, balanced participation from all of the interested parties, the public, inspectors, architects, engineers, contractors, manufacturers, industry associations, unions, workers, students and environmental and conservation groups. No other plumbing and piping codes have such broad participation. But the city honors a great organization today with your resolution. You are honoring countless members of IAPMO who care passionately about the plumbing and piping codes and their craft and their industry. You are honoring one of the most professional, competent, honest, ethical, moral and devoted group of people in the world. I count Russ Chaney, Neil Boguetts and Gabby Davis as some of my most trusted, personal and professional friends. I am very proud of them all the time and I'm never more so than today. I want to point out that our state plumbing and mechanical codes are developed from the IAPMO codes, as are our Los Angeles city codes, and many countries use IAPMO well. We are an organization at IAPMO that is truly making people's lives better all over the world. And we all know that the great city of L.A. has been the birthplace for many great and innovative organizations and companies. And I say to all of you that IAPMO ranks as one of the most important organizations that's ever been started here. So in closing, we want to thank Councilmember Cardenas and all of the council members today for honoring IAPMO. We also want to thank the mayor and the general manager of the best building and safety department in the world, Andrew Adelman.
Hey, Andrew.
We also want to thank Amir Tabak, Chief of the Mechanical Engineering Section, and Mike Tharp, Chief Plumbing Inspector. We also want to thank all of the employees of the city's inspection, architectural and engineering staff. All of them and all of the other industry insiders like me know how important it is for IAPMO to this city, to our state, to our country and to the whole world. We are all better off because of the work of the devoted members and staff of IAPMO. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, Ed Salzberg, member. IAPMO.
Good morning. As a licensed journeyman plumber in the city of Los Angeles and as a consulting mechanical engineer registered in California and other states and as a 50-year member of IAPMO, I've seen the dynamic growth and prestige plus the international recognition of the Uniform Plumbing and Mechanical Codes. I have witnessed the increased reputation and expanse of the official, the IAPMO Monthly Magazine. I have experienced the quality and benefits of the technical programs at the annual conference and the technical seminars held throughout the nation. I've seen the dynamic leadership exhibited by IAPMO's Executive Director, Russ Chaney. I therefore offer congratulations to IAPMO for their 80 years of excellence in protecting the health and welfare of the public. I hope that the next 80 years continue their upward spiral and of success and leadership. Thank you and congratulations for this award.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you. And before our presentation, the next speaker, General Manager, Department of Building and Safety, Andrew Adelman.
Who I know will be brief just because we do have to get to the business, but we appreciate it very much.
Yes, I will. The mission of the Department of Building and Safety is to protect the life safety of residents and businesses of Los Angeles and to contribute to the economic development of the Los Angeles. I am proud to say that we partner very closely with IAPMO on good codes, on great codes, to ensure that buildings are safe and buildings are built right here in L.A. On a personal note, I can match 50-year membership of Ed Salzberg, but I personally have been a member of IAPMO 16 years. Thank you. Was that brief enough?
That was great. Your budget's intact, don't worry.
Remember, we're standing in for Tony Cardenas, so between the three of us, we get 20 minutes, so we're only taking 15. So with this resolution presented on behalf of Councilmember Tony Cardenas, Wendy and I, Gruel, Wendy Gruel and I present this to the members here today on behalf of the City Council in honoring the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials for their endless dedication and commitment to providing the standards in plumbing and sanitation, all in an effort to protect public health and safety throughout the world. One more time, let's congratulate them.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much and congratulations. And we have one final presentation left and then we will be returning to the agenda. So thank you to public speakers and everybody else for their patience. Mr. Weston, do you want to say something?
While we're changing to do the next presentation, Mr. President, would this be an appropriate time to say that Max, the mixed Chihuahua, has been adopted by a friend of mine and ours, Roz Carter, CLA's office. I've known her for 20, 21 years. So as of 10 minutes ago, Roz is a new mother. Max has a home.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Weston, and keeping the streak alive. Congratulations, Ms. Carter. Next, we'll recognize again Ms. Gruel from Council District Two for our final presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Come on, don't be shy. Come on here. Good to see you. It is my pleasure today, colleagues, last but not least, to honor the Center for Nonprofit Management for all of the good work that they do. The Center for Nonprofit Management was established in 1979 by the corporate and foundation community and has been improving the nonprofit community since its inception. It helps nonprofit organizations through leadership development, guiding nonprofits to critical information, counseling those organizations through change, helping to build human capital and promote collaboration and communication, all towards more effective nonprofit organizations, addressing critical issues and serving underserved populations here in our community. I can't imagine what our city would be like without the nonprofits who dedicate their lives every day to our residents. The center makes their information available for nonprofits, adjusts their fees so that all organizations can afford to use them as a resource. And I'm especially proud to talk about the work that we've been doing in my district. In CD Two, we provided funding for five nonprofits to receive a six-week workshop, that series on getting funded. And we all know in the difficult, tight times that we have, both from the government perspective as well as from the private sector, that that kind of access and ability to get funding is critical to their survival. So this was truly a unique opportunity. The center taught the value of fundraising, grant writing, and helped to train these nonprofits to help themselves. And it's wonderful to see them today as a testament to the good work that the nonprofit management center does. And so we have five organizations that are represented and I want to acknowledge them. Claire Knowlton, who's the Executive Director from the Friends of Margority. Claire, Cultural Arts Center. Gail Peters, Director of Development from Tierra del Sol. Excuse me, Daniel Castillon from the Community Coordinator for Valley Care Community Consortium. We have Larry Gordon from One Generation, who's going to be doing the next round of training. And, oh, I'm going to, Sarika Vasant? Close, okay. Valley Care Community Consortium as well is going to be participating in the next round. And so our citizens and our residents are going to be able to access more services based on the training that was provided here today. And so it is my great pleasure and I encourage all of you to access the participation and involvement of the nonprofit center. And so it is with great pride that I prevent, prevent, present, prevent, present. It's been a long morning already, I know, for you all. Centers for Nonprofit Management for all of the accomplishments that you've made and particularly for helping the residents of Council District Two and be able to provide the training that is so necessary. And we know, even in the city, but more importantly in our nonprofits, when they're trying to make a decision as to whether they can afford to go to the training or they have the time to go to the training versus providing that extra service to their residents and community, oftentimes, they choose the residents and the community and don't have the ability to receive the kind of training that was able to be provided. And so I want to thank all of them for participating and hope that they will come back to us and say they successfully received funding based on the training that they received for the Center for Nonprofit Management. And so with that, I'd love to present this proclamation and we're going to allow you to say a few words. But let's give them a great round of applause for all the work that they do, not only in my district but across the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. And Regina, sorry, I didn't mean not to introduce you.
Don't worry.
President and CEO of Nonprofit Management.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. And on behalf of all the people that participated in this class, this is a thank you note to you. It is extraordinary to have a scholarship opportunity to help them build their management expertise and really help them become leaders in the community. And we appreciate that extraordinary effort on your part. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, you too can take advantage of this by supporting, I'm going to give you a plug, the Center for Nonprofit Management and what they do and for the nonprofits. And there were other organizations I did not mention as well. Head with Horses, the Dubnov Center, the School Police, the Mary Magdalene Project and the others that I mentioned. And I know in talking to these agencies, they have thought this is really a critical part of their success. And so again, thank you so very much. And, Mr. President, we have one minute left, so we were under time for that.
Most certainly.
And all of the patients, but let's give a great round of applause for our nonprofits as well that are here with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Weesar?
President, since you have one minute left, I just want to get up and thank you, Ms. Gruel, for bringing this to our attention and thank you to the center. You know, for a lot of nonprofits who do not have all the resources that the private sector has to get that technical training they need, you are providing that very critical support system to allow these nonprofits to go out and do the good work they're doing in our community. So thank you very much. I'm very familiar with your work and thank you, Ms. Gruel, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, the next order of business, please.
Approval of the February 19th minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Weston seconds. Without objection, those are approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves. Mr. Weesar seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item number 10 to February 26th. That's Tuesday.
So any objection, colleagues, to continue item 10 till next Tuesday, the 26th? Seeing no objection, that will be the order of the day. Next items, please.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay, we do not have any cards, so we will open and close the public hearing on one. Anybody wishing to call that special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Number one is approved. Next items, please.
Items two through four are items of which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call the special? Ms., sorry, we've got two, Ms. Perry and then Ms. Han.
Just on item three, I just wanted to move to receive and file the committee report.
Okay. Ms. Perry, on number three...
And I'm sorry, and to move the CAO report.
See, file the committee report and moves the CAO report on that one. Okay.
Thank you.
Without objection, that will be moved. Ms. Han?
And let's call item two, please, special.
Item two, special for Ms. Han. That leaves us three as moved by Ms. Perry. And four, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next are items five through seven. Those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for... Ten votes are required for consideration. And, Mr. President, there is a card on item six.
Okay, we'll call that special for cards from the public. Anybody wishing to call five or seven special from the council? We'll open and close the public hearing for that then, and if we can open the roll on five and seven, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved as well. Next items, please.
Next is a special meeting, Mr. President.
Call the roll, please. For the special meeting.
Alakon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present and inform, Mr. President.
Okay, first items, please.
Items number eight through 10 are, with the exception of number 10, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, is there any objection to consideration? Seeing none, those are before us, and we have cards on eight and nine, so we'll call this special. And do you want to?
Nine special.
Nine as well for Ms. Han. Okay, if we can continue those back into the regular meeting, please. And we'll take a public comment at this time. This is general public comment on items under our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda today. Like to ask Dr. Vicky Halfnagle to come forward as our first speaker. Is Dr. Halfnagle here? Okay, she's not. Michael Hunt will be our next speaker then. Mr. Hunt? Michael Hunt? General public comment. After that will be Matt Dowd.
Is it public comment? Man, this is my good week. I don't even know what I'm going to say. Well, I'll say good morning to the city attorney. Good morning, city attorney. I can't address you, I forgot. I got to address the whole council.
Could you please address business that's before us? So, thank you.
Well, I'm kind of dumbfounded. I'm just having a good day, so I was just in the moment. I don't know what I'm going to say today, like I said, but, you know, I see business going on as normal, and I see that's the way you guys like it. That's the way I like it. I would even like it if I was gone from the L.A. City Council. Am I in the right subject, Mr. City Attorney?
It appears there's an extended discussion of irrelevancies, and he should say something within the topic, within the general jurisdiction of the city.
Well, I say good morning to you.
Stretch, help us out here. Say something that's under our jurisdiction.
Yeah, the mayor. It's good to see the mayor in here. Is that under L.A.'s jurisdiction? It was good to see him giving the kids awards. It was good to see city council functioning as normal without all, oh, we did have some masks in here today, huh? Are we calling for a moratorium on the masks? Mr. Weiss? Oh, okay. I'm just having a good time.
Sorry, this is a last warning, if you can please say something and...
Oh, wait, the masks was in city council favor. Jack Weiss called for it to be in the debate. There was something about the city. Okay, I'm just having fun today. Today is fun. All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good weekend.
Matt Dowd is our next speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, are you Dr. Halfnagle? Why don't you come forward, and then Mr. Dowd will follow after Dr. Halfnagle. She was in the bathroom. Go ahead. If you can just step aside, Mr. Dowd will get you next.
Let me get it all filled.
And if we could ask you to clear the aisle so that she can speak right there. Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Go ahead, please.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. You've had quite a lot of good things and positive things this morning. Unfortunately, I need to come to you with things that need to be fixed, need things that need to be corrected. My name is Dr. Vicky Halfnagle, and I worked with two very important people in from our city, Diane Watson and Maxine Waters. I co-authored the first, the nation's first informed consent bill in this country for women on hysterectomies. That bill became law, and that law has never been enforced. So I went from the career of a surgeon to the career of a heretic, to the career of a theologist and philosopher, and now a bioethicist. I'm here to talk about something personally that happened to me and then talk about the community issues around it. In 1997, I received bills of over $3,000 per month from the Department of Water and Power. They sent out a field representative who was supposed to return the money, and since 1997, that money was never returned, nor the documents. In 1998, during a terrible divorce that is still going on in the federal court against myself and Mr. Robert Schuster, who was my ex-husband, the entire changing of the names by the Department of Water took place, so that all of a sudden, my bills were his bills, and I had over $8,000 in bills that were not mine, that were Mr. Schuster's. Department of Water failed to correct this. A mediation took place which found in my favor, but the funds were never returned to me. I had over $8,000 due, and the Department of Water only provided me with $3,000. Flooded my home in 2001. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, we have two minutes per speaker, so if I can ask you to conclude your comments, and if you have additional ones...
Flooded 2001, and I've been meeting with the city attorney for this, and we were supposed to have it concluded in November. I lost my entire office. Multi-view drive, has flood problems, and I'm also, the Department of Water has signs all over the city that are not being picked up.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We'll see if we can get somebody from the council district that represents you to...
I did contact them six weeks ago, and nothing has been done.
See what we can do for you right now. Thank you. Sharon Brewer out in Van Nuys is our next speaker. After that will be Miriam Fogler. Oh, sorry, Matt Dowd is next, my apologies. And then we'll go out to the valley for Sharon Brewer. After that will be Miriam Fogler.
Thank you, yes. Wow, it's a great day in the city of Los Angeles. I just got an apology from Eric Garcetti. I'm going to have to go home and tape that one and put it up on YouTube. But first, I want to thank the mayor of Los Angeles for showing up in Los Angeles today. Wow, welcome back. He's dragging us down with the Hillary campaign. Everyone thinks Los Angeles is voting for, is behind Hillary, but we're not. Are we, council president? And remember the buttons? Matt Dowd's getting into the political button business. And I did utter one of the buttons, but I won't be saying that again today. But here's some you can use. Get us out of Iraq, Barack. You can use that one. And here's the other one. Forget Osama, vote Obama.
If we could keep our comments and things under our jurisdiction directly.
Well, I saw you in Iowa, Mr. Council President, for supporting Barack Obama, and I'm in favor of that, but it is council business. When the mayor of Los Angeles is in a fiscal emergency, Karen Sisson just told me, we're going to be in debt again next year. I just talked to Karen Sisson, the CAO, Chief Administrative Officer of the City of Los Angeles, Mr. City Attorney, Dion O'Connell, thanks for not interrupting. And Jack Weiss, I'm not addressing him, I'm talking about him, sorry. I found it, there was a mistake, I got to correct. It's Saturday, December 1507, when he's quoted as saying he knows the First Amendment better than anyone. So why are we even talking to the Daily News about wearing masks in City Hall? You should already know that it's legal if you know the First Amendment better than anyone. But anyway, I'll have a button for Jack Weiss soon too, probably, but that's coming up. And it's been fun being on Channel 35 again.
Our next speaker is out in San Fernando Valley, Ms. Brewer, and after that will be Miriam Fogler. Good morning.
Morning. Actually, it's afternoon, I believe. Sharon Brewer, public comment, Wednesday, February 20th, 2008, Agenda Item 25. Ordinances first consideration relative to amending L.A. Municipal Code, no code number given, to authorize city clerk to administer neighborhood council elections and to make other NC election-related changes. Fact, at no time were NCs told that if the city clerk ran their elections, that the NCs would be required to offer vote by mail and candidate write-ins. There are approximately 22 NCs who will have their elections run by the city clerk in June. The other NCs who have elections in 2008 will have done run them with no requirements that the NCs have vote by mail and write-in candidates. How is that fair? Why don't all the NCs having elections in 2008 required to provide vote by mail and candidate write-ins? Example, Lake Malboa Neighborhood Council election is April 12, 2008. They were listed to have the city clerk run it, but they don't offer vote by mail, so if you can't make it to the polls, oh, well, too bad for the public. Friday, February 22nd, Daily News, front page, millions for parks sit idle, audit, developer fees accumulating in account with no plans for use. $129 million sitting in account just waiting to be spent, according to an audit released Thursday by Controller Laura Chek. I have a copy of a letter dated October 31st, 2007, to the council members from Recreation and Parks, General Manager John Muckrey, about current status of Quimby program, council file 073387. At the bottom is a stamp, November 2, 2007, arts, parks, health, and aging. Why hasn't the city council followed up on this $129 million with John Muckrey, General Manager of Recreation and Parks? He was, the letter says that the city council directed them to take and report and to take care of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker. And we had a little bit of distortion out there in the valley, so folks could speak a little further behind the microphone. We'll be able to hear you a little less distorted. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, right. Well, anyway, what she was talking about, this Quimby funds, I agree with her on that. And of course, we're sitting here, and we should know how many presentations you do so that we know when we can speak. I don't know why you don't have that listed on the agenda, but we appreciate the courtesy. So I was talking about the Quimby funds, that the fact is that the city is losing money to the general fund. Every little thing here is adding up. And of course, you're looking up to getting money, I'm sure, from the federal government for subsidizing cops, so that you can take the revenue away from that and use that for something else. And I tell you that the one thing that you are doing is supporting a good candidate, Barack Obama, and of course, I take a stand because the fact is, he's going to give you more money than Hillary would. Secondly, she said last night, and this is very relative to the City of Angels, we have Chinese products coming here to the city ports, and that's a big industry for us. And for us to be on the hot seat between, with China and Russia, supporting Kosovo's independence is really bad. We're in the oven, folks. We just cop from the frying pan into the oven. And you know who bombed Serbia in 1993? It was Bill and Hillary Clinton that did that. They were in the White House. Remember, folks, our embassy was placed on fire, and, you know, no telling now what the repercussions, ramifications of this incident that, okay, Milosevic made that a little genocide, but we did worse genocide by bombing all those people and bombing the women, Serbian women who were carrying babies, and their chemical plants were had to be aborted. This is from the Clinton administration, so don't vote for her.
Bruce Darian is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back for Walter Bechtel here in chambers. Mr. Darian.
Morning, City Council. President Garcetti, we're getting some feedback here. I don't know if it's happening right now. I'm going to follow up. You had commented that there was a broadcast, and the LA Times wrote about the explosion of transformers and underground pollution at Sunset and Vine. I'm going to investigate that more. I've been trying on the internet without success last night, but I'm going to inform the public when the explosion was, when it was written about, and if there was a time delay, why there was a time delay, and how much delay there was, what the reason for it was. I'm going to take this and continue to inform the public on that. There was a, no press written on the collapse, roof collapse at the entrance to the Kodak Theater of the Academy Awards two years ago, which I witnessed over a period of three hours. At about 10 o'clock, being a contractor of 30 years, I had warned the top of my lungs five individuals that were standing right underneath the support beam. They ignored me in defiance, and within four seconds, it collapsed, and hundreds of gallons of water came down on them. The support beam had guy wires to hold it back, but it would certainly have killed them if it came down on them. The point being there is that there are several roofs across the Southland in Los Angeles that need to be made sure that the drains are clear. A tremendous amount of water can build up quickly in the rainy season, as we saw with the water building up over this makeshift roof over the Academy Awards entrance two years ago. But nonetheless, getting back to the Sunset and Vine cover-up, I'll continue to inform the public of this story, what the federal government is doing in monitoring the contamination underground, and what steps are being taken to prevent the public from any health hazards from the PCBs that were emitted from the transformers. That's all I have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darian. Our next speaker is here in council chambers, Walter Bechtel. After that will be Linda DeJong.
Okay, I wanted to come back and reiterate what I'd already talked about, the ownership of the Ford Hotel. I don't think, I don't know if you people got this document. It was filed on May 30th, 2007. It is the zoning administrator's decision that the Ford Hotel came into compliance with all the conditions. There is no more criminal activities, and it is not a dilapidated property, as is spelled out in the CDD document filed on the 29th of November. Also, I filed at that time an allegation of co-ownership of the Ford Hotel. The city properly sent out notices, whoever is contending ownership or partial ownership of the hotel, please attend the meetings. I attended a meeting on May 8th. I also attended a meeting on September or October of 2004. At that time, I also contended partial ownership. Nobody's challenged me, but nobody's noticed and giving me notices of what your people are doing, and that's not legal. You can't proceed legal and then ask the Fed and all these other people for loans. Okay? So if somebody would please talk to me instead of doing this stuff behind my back, and then yesterday, this SRO people moving, starting to move their people in there, taking over. Otherwise, I'm going to have to inform my families and associated families to please boycott the city of L.A. and the county of Los Angeles and forbid you from entering our properties. And that's some big families, Sarah. Not just the Bechtel Corporation. I'm talking about Schumacher Wallboard and all our associated families, Heaton's, Barlow's, and people that you see on the land plats of the early purchases of this country. So please, somebody, if you're going to do anything with that Ford, please talk to me about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Our final speaker is Linda DeJong. There's Linda DeJong here.
Hi, everybody. Okay, as you all of you know, in the year 2002, I made this pitch, right? Maybe not everybody remember. Okay, I came here to, I mean, 1980, May 13. So this year, May 13, I'll be 28 years. I worked almost my, I worked my butt off, really. And all I got is now, one suitcase, mental drugs, my Holy Bible free from the preacher, full-stamped application, and I keep getting handcuffed, and I keep getting, shut up. I keep getting thrown out of every government place. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Darian.
I'm sorry. And I don't know if I can really mention about this. Whenever I go anywhere, pass by someone, they said, oh, what? I mean, I want to ask all of you, what is White House whore?
Mr. President, doesn't appear that she's speaking about anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
I want to find out. I'm going to Washington D.C. this summer, all right?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. D Jong. That'll close our public comment. We'll return to the agenda. I think Mr. Reyes wanted to bring some staff forward for an item.
Yes, I'd like to ask Roberto Mejia to join me here. If you'd just indulge me, council, come on, come over here. I don't put you to center table, that would be too cruel. But colleagues, you know, every committee member has a strong CLA person that does a lot of work. They are like the... They are like the unsung heroes. Roberto actually helps this chairman of Planning, Land Management. We do average about seventeen, eighteen items per week. Sometimes we get up to thirties. Sometimes we last two to three hours. And so, and the person who drives this is Roberto. Now, I wanted to take a moment because I wanted to acknowledge and celebrate his wedding day. Roberto Mejia and Maria Gutierrez. What a sneaky guy. They met CLA, she's with the CAO, and I wish we could have brought her too, but we would have asked her to come, we would have blown it, because I know Roberto wouldn't have shown up.
That's like the Sharks and the Jets.
Congratulations, Roberto. Happiness, prosperity on your wedding day, which already happened. In the years to come, congratulations, best wishes on my behalf, on behalf of the council. Thank you, Roberto, for all your hard work.
Mr. Isa.
Thank you very much. Roberto, as, from coming from another Plum member, I wanna thank you for the great work you do. You sometimes get us through some difficult issues and explain some of those technical issues. We really appreciate it. And I also really appreciate when you wear your Cal tie to the Plum community. Makes my day, too.
All I have to say is, go Bears!
Thank you. We'll take up the next item, please.
Next is item number two, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I wanted to call it special just to highlight what this is. Before us, we're authorizing an owner participation agreement with the CRA and the Port of Los Angeles for the construction of the new port police headquarters in San Pedro. And I really wanted to highlight this item. It's in a redevelopment area in downtown San Pedro. It's about 51,000 square feet for this building. It'll cost about $47 million. And it's important because as we talk about port security at the Port of Los Angeles, our port police officers have been operating out of a less than adequate facility. This will be a state-of-the-art facility. And it's also important because one of the goals to achieving security at the port has been to increase the ranks of our port police. They started at about 45 a few years ago, and they're well over 100 today. Our goal is to have 200 port police officers. Having that as their only jurisdiction, their only beat is to protect the Port of Los Angeles and the surrounding areas, and it's important that they have a state-of-the-art facility. We've also, this is an interesting, while we're on the subject of this building, Mr. City Attorney, I just wanted to bring to the attention that I actually held this item up in my Commerce Committee because I wanted to make sure that we had a project labor agreement in place. We're not quite there yet, but we have guaranteed that this particular facility will be 100% labor, and there's a 30% commitment to local hires for this project. Really important all over the City of Los Angeles, particularly important in San Pedro, which historically is really a union labor town, and we didn't want $47 million project to not have the guarantees that we know come with good union labor, on time, on budget, and it's better work in the long run. Having said that, again, Mr. City Attorney, on this subject, we're close to having a portwide project labor agreement policy as we move forward. With every project that the Port of Los Angeles undertakes, we'll have a project labor agreement. So this OPA, downtown San Pedro, one of the good advantages of this is we'd get 100 new park, public parking spaces, which is so important in downtown San Pedro. We'll have two open-air plazas, and it will be open to the public. And right next door to this building, of course, is our wonderful Port of Los Angeles Charter High School, which, everybody, this is a perfect example of a charter high school located in downtown and associated with the Port of Los Angeles, so that these students not only will be learning regular curriculum-type items, but will have opportunities to learn about careers in the maritime industry. So this is a great project, and I threw a lot in there. Thank you, City Attorney, for letting me say all that. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Any other speakers wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on item two and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item number six, and there is a card on this.
Okay. Item number six is now before us. Matt Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on item six.
Yeah, thank you. Me and Mike Cant are here today on Channel 35, looking at some of the business of the City of Los Angeles, since we're in a litigation, shall we say. We gotta keep you on your toes, and this is another one. Rent escrow account program, and you can read all about this kind of stuff on ladailyblog.com, all the City of Los Angeles news.
If you could please address the item before us.
L A cityblog.com, thank you.
Second warning, if you could please address what's before us.
We're talking about the rent escrow account program on the blog. This is where landlords haven't made necessary repairs, keep the buildings up to code, so we take the rent from them until they fix the buildings. Our member Zuma Dog talked all about this one, so check it out on the blogs. Thank you.
That closes our public comment on this. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is item number eight, and that is called special because there is a card, and it was called special by Councilmember Alacon.
Okay. Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on item eight.
Now, this is an interesting one. We talked about these, and if City Attorney can probably correct me, but we're, we're gonna oppose some development now. We're opposing developments. The Environmental Affairs Department, they look like they're against this one. Department of Transportation, oh my God, the mayor must have lost a little bit of control because this looks to me like we're actually opposing some kind of development, and from what I've seen in the city lately, it's been all development. We're building liquor stores and video arcades next to schools, all kind of crazy development that I hear on Channel 35 and on the ladailyblog.com. Thank you. It's Matt Dowd, reporting for Channel 35.
First speaker is Richard Alacon from the council.
Members, this is the New Hall Village project that the county is, that is before the Board of Supervisors. But the issue goes far beyond that. The question is, is to what extent should the city be identifying properties that are proposed for development outside of our boundaries that will nevertheless affect our boundaries? So I would like to ask staff from the various departments to step forward to help us get a better understanding of what we are doing to keep an eye on this. This is 21,000 units of housing. Apparently, we were notified, but, but at no point in the development process did the city weigh in. And the question to me is, with 21,000 units of housing that would be developed over 30 years, SCAG, by the way, has done a study that says that the northern region, past Silmar and toward the Santa Clarita Valley area, has, has no jobs housing balance plan, that in fact, it, it is contributing housing, but not a sufficient number of jobs. This project alone is proposed for 21,000. The woman who testified in public comment on behalf of this project said, but we're at the same time planning during that same period, 20, we have a plan for 20,000 jobs. Well, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that if we have 21,000 homes, there's gonna be much more than 20,000 jobs that are needed for those homes, and what will happen is those, those job seekers will come to Los Angeles to find the jobs, further compacting and concentrating the traffic at the 514 and destroying the valley, the morning commute for people on the freeways that congest the Silmar and Mission Hills and Boca Rima areas. So the big question, the first questions are, that I would like the staff to comment on, are really relative to the specificity of this project. We know that the county has delayed their, their agendizing this matter for a month, so we have a little bit more room to, to develop a strategy. But we'd like to know a little bit about what, if, if anything at all, staff is doing about this project. And, but then secondly, the broader question, what are we doing to identify and make sure that we respond to these projects that are having an impact? Even Mr. Zion commented on Los Lomas project. Obviously, that's a very controversial issue, but nevertheless, that one is, the staff's involvement was relative only because there was a proposal for annexation. When a project is not going to be annexed, we nevertheless should be keeping, keeping an eye on it to see whether we want to take a position or not. So in no particular order, if, if staff could weigh in and, and respond to those questions.
Mike LaGran. Please hold my time. Mike LaGran, Department of City Planning, along with the City Attorney's Office and staff from the Department of Transportation to my right. In response to the motion, I'll start with your second question regarding how does, how is it that the City of Los Angeles would not comment under the California Environmental Quality Act on a project this large? And under SEQA, there's definition of a responsible agency, which means we'd have to have a discretionary action in order to be included in terms of their required secret distribution. So the county would be required, if we had a discretionary action on this process, to send us a copy of their draft EIR for us to comment on during the official comment period. Since this doesn't touch our border as well as, there is no requirement for us to receive a copy of the EIR, to my knowledge, none of the agencies here today had received a copy of this project when the initial specific plan was done for New Hall land, as well as the current track map that this EIR addresses. So there's, your concern, I think, in a broader context, that how do we respond to projects around our boundaries, needs to be looked at and studied, and we can report back to you on some solutions that we find, so that the city would have a little bit more of a watchdog attitude to look to see our surrounding cities, for example, Torrance, other areas in the South Bay that may be affecting our borders, or areas like Beverly Hills also. We've seen a lot of pass-through traffic happen, so that we can address that more on a citywide basis. In terms of this project, the technical answer is because we're not a responsible agency is why we wouldn't receive comment, an opportunity to comment on this officially being sent to us. But we still do have an opportunity to comment on this project, and I'll let the other staff from other agencies talk about some of the preliminary research they've done that they would share with your office.
I'm Sergio Valdez with the Department of Transportation. We've taken a very cursory look at the Landmark Village project, which is the 1,100-home project, and one of the things that we're exploring, and we'd like to make comments to LA County Impact Analysis Section, is of extending the study area. Currently, the study area that's for this project goes to Cal Grove and the I-5 freeway, so we'd like to see about the possibility of extending it further. It's, it's, we're exploring it. Right now, since it's very preliminary, we haven't really taken much of a look at it, but we'd like to look at that. We know that there's also some improvements that are being planned for the I-5 freeway with Caltrans in conjunction with a, a plan that's being done for the I-5, the 14, and the 126 freeway. And we'd also like to get in touch with them and be able to see what's going on with that. We'd also looked at, and I'm telling you, cursory looks, some of, some of the things that you pointed out. This traffic study was done with a traffic model that was put together by LA County and the City of Santa Clarita. We would like to take a closer look at that traffic model, to see if the assumptions in that traffic model are indeed correct in terms of jobs housing balancing and things, things of that nature. And the last thing is that we would like to see what the cumulative effects of all of these projects that are being built up there would be. And so that, in just, in just a very cursory look, those are some of the things that we've, we've come up with.
I, I think the question that I have is, notwithstanding the fact that you're, you're saying that we did not receive notification, we were advised by, by the developers that they in fact did notify the city, so I, I would like to, for you to double-check that, perhaps with the developers or whoever. But, but even if the project was, was not within our, our, our response, whether or not we, we could be legally defined as a responsive entity, it seems to me that it's in our interest to know that 21,000 homes are coming in the next 20 years. Have we incorporated that, for example, into our city's strategic plan for transportation?
I, I know that the city's strategic plan for, for transportation is a plan that's being worked, we're working together with SCAG on all of this, so it probably is being incorporated for that, but that's something we'll have to get back to you on. But I believe that it is, but I'm, I'm not going to make a commitment right now that it is.
Well, the point being is, is that even if we don't have a legal right, if you will, to insert ourselves as an impacted group, we certainly seem to have a responsibility to do so anyway, just internally. And that's, what's curious to me is that there was never any city response whatsoever on this project, which has been around since, what, 1998?
Correct.
So besides this project, how do we go forward to be a little more visionary, to be a little more assertive, to be a little more strategic in looking at the other jurisdictions? By the way, this is not in a, in a city jurisdiction, municipal jurisdiction, as you referenced, it's in a county land area. How are we going to be a little, a little more aggressive in, in understanding what is going on around us, so that we can be more strategic with the resources that we have and the plans that we are developing for projects and for traffic mitigations in our city?
Mike LaGran, Department of City Planning. I think you've raised some very good points, Councilman, and we'd like to have an opportunity to take a comprehensive look at how we handle projects that are outside of the city boundaries and make sure we have appropriate mitigation in those projects that are addressed when they pass through Los Angeles. So rather than try and think of a quick answer to give you, we'd like a chance to study this with the other departments, as well as with Environmental Affairs Department, and come back to you with some solutions that we can present to the full council and possibly the Plum Committee, to look at different ways that we can actually address this for future projects, so that we don't have this type of lack of analysis for you.
Obviously, we don't have enough information here today. Members, you did not provide anything in writing, so I would ask that we, we direct the Department of Transportation, Department of Planning, with the assistance of the CLA to, to draft a report on how we can do a better job of identifying major projects that could have impact in the City of Los Angeles, that we would have to incorporate into our strategic plans, and what timeframe would be reasonable?
I think 30 days we should be able to accomplish the report.
Okay, 30 days would be helpful because it would be before the county's decision on this particular one. And then secondly, I would like you to continue your work to identify what specifically we might do with regard to the New Hall Village project, because we have taken a position to oppose that, the whole development, the 21,000 units of housing, and, and how strategically we should move forward. But I do think that, that the other thing that we need to develop, and I think you should incorporate in your comments, is how to strategically use our partners. These are members of the MTA. These are members of SCAG. These are members of regional governance authorities that we are, are involved with, and it seems to me that we should be using those regional government entities to develop plans more effectively, and also to marshal resources where mitigations are, are the order of the day. And I think there's nothing more, more clear than the fact that there will be a need for mitigation. Just by virtue of your comments, and I'll close with this, by virtue of your comments that we didn't have, we didn't have to respond, when in fact, we know that 21,000 units of housing just five minutes from LA's border is going to impact our, our city, and the fact that we have not developed a strategy around that indicates that we need to do a better job to work with the MTA, for one example, to incorporate that into their strategic plan to mitigate the projects in, to mitigate in Los Angeles what they are creating outside of Los Angeles. So I'm gonna leave it at that for now, but I'm not gonna let go of this issue. We've got to do a better job to recognize that urban sprawl will still affect the center of the storm, and that's Los Angeles City. And so we've got to be, with all the other work we do internally, we've got to be mindful of what's going on externally. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alacon.
Oh, we, we want to come back with our report on March 18th.
March 18th, okay.
Would that be?
Sure, we'll amend that for that. You can open the roll, please, on the motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item number nine, and that was
Next is item number nine, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay, we have some cards from the public. Ms. Hahn will take first. Sharon Brewer on the San Fernando Valley. After Ms. Brewer will be Miriam Fogler.
Hi, Sharon Brewer on item number nine. Communication from the Board of Referring Powers relative to a proposed joint-use agreement with the Los Angeles Orthopedic Hospital for the operation and maintenance of a universally accessible playground. What I'd like to go and read is the fiscal impact statement. Approval of this agreement will have an impact on the department's general fund. At this time, the department does not have a budget allocation for the maintenance and security services of the playground. It is also unknown what the annual city cost will be for providing the required services. Cost estimates will be prepared as soon as possible, and department staff will prepare and submit a budget request for the costs of this joint-use activity. General Manager Report 0852, Recreation and Parks, says that it is expected that the city will be providing maintenance and security services soon after the completion of construction, which is supposed to be by the end of March of this year. I have a question. Has LA Orthopedic Hospital put aside funding to provide security and maintenance for their universally accessible playground? If no, why not? If yes, why should Recom Parks have to find money for security and maintenance for a joint-use project? Also, what is the city's liability with regards to any injuries that might happen at a playground owned by LA Orthopedic Hospital, possibly a private entity? City Council stopped okaying projects that impact the general fund, especially when the dollar amount is not known. Why should security be provided for this playground when a heavily hundreds of people-used park like Lake Balboa has no security at all? You can't go and provide security at one place and ignore another place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, and we'll come back to council chambers for other speakers.
I would like to have your attention. I know I'm going off topic, but I just got a call from my father. I'd like to have everybody pray for my mom. She's in a coma now. Please, can you do that for your German, please, motion to make a prayer for my mom, please? She loves singing in the United States of America. I'll speak on public comment next time.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. We'll keep your mind.
But I would like to talk about the issue I know, that we need to address what Sharon Brewer had said, that it's very important that we need to know what we're getting ourselves into when we get into projects of this sort. It's very important. She studied up on this stuff. She's done, you need to take her word for what she says. You heard it from the lady right there. She knows what she's doing here, and I commend her for her, and I appreciate her coming down here and letting you people know. You've got to hear what she's saying. And just right now, I'm very trying to be somber, and I would hope that she would have journey motions, journey motions for my mom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd. It's Mr. Dowd, I think he left, and Mr. Hunt has also left. Okay. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. And, Miriam, we're all paying attention to what you just said about your mom, and certainly all of us will say a prayer for her at this time. So thank you for sharing that with us. And, you know, I had some of the same questions that Sharon had out there in the valley. I had the very same questions on this Board of Referring Powers when we looked at this joint-use agreement between the Department of Recreation and Parks and Orthopedic Hospital. And I said the same thing. Why, during this tough time, are we adding something to the budget? I was also a little concerned that the department had not put forth a specific budget to handle this. But after asking all those questions, we were assured that this made a lot of sense. It was a way to, again, serve a part of the city that is underserved in terms of open space and playground equipment. This is one of the universally accessible playgrounds. The department's theory was that we had somebody else pay for, to the tune of almost $1 million, I think, for the construction of this playground. We would enter into an agreement to oversee the maintenance and security. In return, this will be open to all of the residents of Los Angeles. Every day of the week, they made the case that for this minimal amount of money that they said that would really be involved in any kind of maintenance or security, the benefits back to Los Angeles way outweighed any kind of budget crunch that somehow that would put us into. In terms of liability, it would be like any other park under our jurisdiction, where it would be under the umbrella of the city's liability. So they made the case, and I asked all the tough questions too, but they made the case to me, this was a win-win. Somebody else built it, somebody else paid for it. All we had to do was bare minimum in terms of maintenance and security, and in turn, we got something special for the residents of Los Angeles, who already are underserved when it comes to playgrounds and open space. So that's why, on the Board of Referring Powers, we agreed to do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your good work on that. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, indeed. This was a win-win for everybody. Ms. Hahn's right on the mark, great leader, has done great with that committee, which we never meet, the joint powers group, but occasionally we must meet, and this was a must meeting. Every Child Foundation, which we honored here right on the council floor not too long ago, put over $950,000 toward it, and this will be one of the most forward-looking playgrounds for children with special needs in the world. And literally, millions of dollars of private sector money is financing this. And when we talk, as Ms. Hahn just said, about our budget crisis and all these other things, one of the ways to pull us out of it is public-private partnerships, not just with the business community, but with the philanthropic community. And as we get into this budget crisis in other areas, the message out there for all foundations, like every Child Foundation, which has showed real leadership, is start opening up those checkbooks and start taking that foundation money and start supporting us in various ways in public-private partnership. This is a perfect example of how the private sector, the philanthropic foundation sector, and the city can work together and make the world a better place. It's just one of those great hallelujahs. And of course, we want unanimous support on this. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for your leadership.
Hallelujah.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate both of your work on this. I know a number of us have been in contact with the board members and their good work, and I know Ms. Perry continues to do a great job in that area, too. So with that, if we can open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, and we'll send that forth with, without objection. If we can take up a special one, please. Mr. City Attorney on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that a reward be offered for information leading to the arrest of suspects responsible for a Molotov cocktail attack on the Jewish Federation Valley Alliance. Immediate action is required for the benefit of the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, on the findings, if we can please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is now before us. Mr. Zine, the maker of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason for this matter at this particular time, I've checked with the multiple investigations taking place. An incident took place at the center where a Molotov cocktail was thrown at the Jewish Community Center on Vanona, my district. And there were some other incidents that have taken place in the valley in my district and Mr. Weiss's district, attacking Jewish population in our districts. And that's why we're bringing this motion forward this time. The investigators from Alcohol Tobacco Firearms, FBI, the Worship Task Force, I met with, and they said, "Hold off on this until the appropriate time." Now's the appropriate time that they've asked that we move forward with this. Mr. Weiss and I are going to have a news conference next week regarding it. Other information is going to be released to the community of Los Angeles, and hopefully we can find apprehension. Anyone who's going to attack someone because of their race, their religion, don't belong in our society, and we're taking a very aggressive effort with the investigations taking place. So we'd ask that this matter move forward. Mr. Weiss's office and my office are working together, along with the FBI, the LAPD, Criminal Conspiracy, West Valley, arson, alcohol tobacco firearms. There's a number of investigations taking place, and we hope to apprehend these individuals, but they haven't only taken out at the Jewish Community Center. But there was a residence in my district close to the community center that was also Molotov cocktail. So we've taken this matter very, very serious, and we're not going to let our population, Jewish population, African-American population, Latino population, be intimidated by racists and bigots that are in our society. So we ask that this matter be posted, this reward be offered. Again, next week, we will be having a news conference with the Jewish Federation, Anti-Defamation League, Jewish Community Center, and bringing additional evidence forward to hopefully bring about an arrest and a stop to this menacing activity taking place by some individuals that have a lot of hatred in their heart. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to say that this was earlier this week. I get confused, because it was the three-day weekend, but it was Monday evening when this was discovered. And the LAPD called me, and I immediately called folks, leaders of the Jewish Federation, other folks in the Jewish community, and to let them know what I knew. And one of the first things that they told me was, "Councilman Zine has already been here. He was, he'd already been out at the scene immediately." And then, when I finally reached Mr. Zine about two hours later, you were finishing, you were at an evening event, and you were on your way back to the Federation. And the next day, when I spoke to folks at the Federation, he'd been there again as well. And I just want everyone in council to know that Mr. Zine was extraordinarily responsive in what was, it's a very, very serious situation. The term of art is Molotov cocktail, but what that means is bomb. These were bombs, that liquid-fueled bombs that were basically thrown at the Federation and at another location nearby. And Mr. Zine and his office have been extraordinarily responsive in this, and we're hoping that we will get a break in this case. And the people who did this are going to be prosecuted for very serious crimes. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a ditto, a strong ditto to that, Mr. Zine. Hate crimes, be they what they are, should never be tolerated under any circumstances, period. And when I read about it, I was outraged, and I certainly appreciate your quick leadership on it. We support you all 100% on it. Thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you, Mr. Zine. I know many have been in contact with Mr. Fischel at the Federation, and he also singled out and complimented your good and quick work. So with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approval. Send that forth with, without objection. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk.
Okay, let's run through those.
Councilmember Groll requests to be excused on May 13th for city business. This meets policy.
She's excused?
Councilmember Reyes requests to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on March 26th for city business. This meets policy.
Okay, he is excused.
President Garcetti requests to leave at 11:30 a.m. on May 13th for city business. This meets policy.
That excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, announcements, colleagues. Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to wish you, Mr. President, a good journey on your trip. I know you're going thousands of miles, and it's really important that people like you travel and create the relationships, positive relationships around this great earth. So have a great trip and a safe return.
See you in a week. Thank you. Following Ms. Hahn's footsteps. Absolutely.
Ciao to everyone.
Announcements, Mr. Parks.
I have a business announcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that the travel show of the Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting in West LA on February 25th at the West LA Municipal Building. This meeting will be hosted by CD 11, and it will be at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
It's a business meeting.
Do we have any adjourning motions, colleagues, today? Okay, if I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. We're now doing adjourning motions. We've --
[inaudible]
Thank you.
[inaudible]
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl? If we can recognize you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with sadness that I announced that a good friend of ours, mother has just passed, Charlie Senna, who's been quite an active guy in the community. His mother just died, Catherine Gilda Senna. She was born, well, she just died January 31st in San Antonio, Texas, after courageous battle with cancer. She was born August 25th, 1928, to Gillespie Emilia-Samali Chaluka of New Rochelle, New York. Although she was a very talented journalist who had won numerous awards, she gave up her profession to raise a family. The daughter of Italian immigrants, she was a graduate of New Rochelle High School and the College of New Rochelle. Her husband, Joseph Senna, predeceased her in 1981. Catherine's passion in life was education and her family. When her children were in school, she edited numerous school newsletters, was active in the Cub Scouts, became a PTA president, and devoted substantial time to educational activities. Her family remembers her for everlasting love, wonderful family dinners and gatherings, and for unwavering help and guidance throughout their lives. She is survived by her three sons, Joseph, Charles, who we know quite well, and Richard, and a sister, Mary Jane, and five grandchildren, Jennifer, Allison, Ethan, Amanda, and Adam. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks.
I'd like to ask if we adjourn in memory of Eleanor Kellogg, 8th District Resident, who passed away on Wednesday, February 6th. She has resided in Los Angeles since the 1920s. She's survived by her husband, Robert, and three children, six grandchildren, 11 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? I'd like to second Mr. Rosendahl's, Charlie Senna. He's a great man in our city, and I'm sorry to hear the news. With that, Madam Clerk.